Way to do it, back in the day.
The time is 7:03 and we'll call this meeting to order for June 25th, 2018. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Browning?
Here.
Mr. Roark?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Jake King of New Beginnings United Methodist Church. If you'll all please rise and we'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please. We can just write that up.
All right, let's pray. Lord, we come to you tonight and we're grateful to be here. We lift up this meeting, we lift up the leaders of this city. Lord, a lot of big things coming up. We just pray over all the Fourth of July festivities, all of the those involved volunteers and and staff and all the spectators, Lord, and everything that surrounds that. It's such a great place and a great city to be able to enjoy that. So we just pray for the safety of everyone that's involved with that. We pray for this meeting and all the things that are going to be discussed, Lord, that you have chosen these leaders and you have chosen them for their positions. So we pray that you would be with them and just guide them with grace and with wisdom. Let me pray this in your name. Amen.
.......................................
Thank you Pastor King. Item four is the approval of the motion summary of the regular meeting of council of June 11th as recorded and transcribed.
Second.
Of the motion by Mr. Schaefer, a second one, Mr. Keller. Ms. Keller? Mr. ... Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Roark?
Here.
Now say yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Item five is the consent agenda. If you'll please read this on the record alone.
Item A, acceptance of the motion summary of the Board on Zoning Appeals Meeting Held on March 8th, 2017 as recorded and transcribed. Item B, acceptance of the motion summary of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Meeting Held on May 15th, 2018 as recorded and transcribed. Item C, Resolution Number 18-37, a resolution appointing, reappointing members to various boards, commissions, and/or committees and specifying the term of the appointment. Item D, Resolution Number 18-38, a resolution authorizing the installation of traffic controlling devices being out of a handicap parking space in front of 150 North Sandusky Street on the east side of North Sandusky Street. This handicap space will remain until the requesting party no longer requires the need for such space and will be removed upon such request. Item E, Resolution Number 18-39, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding between the Ohio Department of Public Safety and the City of Delaware for the acquisition of a Trimble S5 total station. And item F, established July 9th, 2018 at 7:20 PM as a date and time for public comment in a second reading of Resolution Number 18-40, a resolution authorizing the restriction of on-street parking on the north side of West Fountain Avenue between Forest Avenue and New Glidda Avenue between the hours of 7:30 AM and 3:45 PM on school days.
Thank you. What is the wish of council on the consent agenda?
Move through.
Second. Of a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Ms. Keller. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Roark?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Much in carries. Item six is time set aside for letters, for public comments, for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. Mr. Jones?
I have none, ma'am.
Mrs. Keller?
I have none.
Mr. Browning?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Hellinger?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Schaefer?
Nothing.
Okay. Item eight is a presentation request for Terra Alter and I think it'll be done by who else can do this? You'd like to come?
A lot of people here.
Yes, I see that.
We'll have some help. You can run the panel. Hi, I'm David Fisher with Kephart Fisher, here on behalf of the development team. I've got Jim Owen, running the development team here with me, but I've also got some other folks to introduce. I've got Marty Savco, that's one of the owner developers in the back with his wife. I've got David Dieback there, that's going to be running the community authority and the homeowners association for us. We all know Mike Shade and Steve Cutler. We've got Greg Stipe, that's our NCA, New Community Authority lawyer with us. So we've got a whole team here to answer any questions that may come up during this time period. First of all, thank you for giving us a little bit of time tonight on the agenda. I know we were a late arrival, but we appreciate your willingness to do that. I think we got into your packet, it's time to begin everybody's packet, the PowerPoint slide presentation. So what I'd like to do is spend some time going through that together with you. Yes, thank you, and it's up on the board as well. And we'll go through those one at a time and just share with you what this is all about. Many of you recognize me because I've been coming here along with Marty Savco and some others for well in excess of 10 years now on what we call the Terra Alter Project. Terra Alter Project originally started off as the old Schmidt Longo piece that had been annexed to the city years ago. This development team acquired that and we went through the zoning process. Since that time, this team has also acquired what's known as the Stockdale Farm. And if you recall, Mike Shade took that through zoning years ago. And then we've also added what's known as the Rogers Track, which is between the two. And so moving forward, we're going to refer to it all as Terra Alta. But it's those three parcels together. So Jim, if you'd move to the next slide. We're going to go through these on the board, but I know you have them in your packet there. So this is the first slide that shows you the overall layout of the Terra Alta property and project, which is in excess of 800 lots, spanning a large portion of land down along the river. And as you know, with site development occurring, you can now see it coming down Route 23. I can tell you this development team and its consultants are very excited about this project and where we're headed. But what we're here to talk to you tonight about is a community authority and how it might work to help us and we think also help the city bring the vision and all of the attributes of the Terra Alta Project to fruition and full development. As I'm sure you all know, I often say, real estate development's from neither the weak of heart or the faint of pocketbook. We've been at this for 10 or 12 years now. It's a very expensive undertaking. We've lived through the 2008 dip in the economy, but we're back. As you know, there's site development going on, there's lot development occurring, we're going to start seeing houses grow up there before long. Nonetheless, there's still a lot to be done and there's still a lot of money to be spent to get this done and to bring the vision to reality for the city at the level we'd like to bring it. And that's really what this is about. This is about sort of an either-or. We're going to show you the best of class we can do tonight for Terra Alta. But we want to emphasize for you that for us and for the city, to both enjoy this best of class for everyone involved, we need some help. We're going to talk that through. So that's the first slide. That starts to show you not only the entire layout, but also the kind of really high-scale amenities and playground facilities that will come about as a consequence of that. Jim, you want to add something?
So the first two slides you're going to see are what is quote currently approved. And then as we take you through the slides, we want to show you, here's all the things and here's how we want to change the character and the feel of the community itself. So this first slide here is, this is what is to be built. This is what's already approved. And it shows some of the amenities of regular swing set. And then when we go through and start talking about all the different things we want to add, that's when it gets exciting.
Thanks, Jim. So the second slide, it's kind of breaks it down. This is the Stockdale Farms portion. And once again, as Jim said, what's been approved down at Stockdale. As perhaps you know, we have worked with your city and the engineering to put a roundabout end down there to correct some, some traffic and some, some issues down on that site. This is the overall site and the importance of this slide to you and to us is the dash line that shows the distinction and the boundary line between Delaware City Schools at the top of the slide and Old Tangi Local Schools at the southern part of the slide, at the lower part of the slide. And we've worked hard with your, with your city manager administration to really hear what you have to say about making sure as this project develops that we make certain to create move-up housing opportunities within the Delaware City School District. And we're going to show you some slides that bring that forth in more detail for you. But you can note from the legend, this shows where the lots are, it shows where the open space is, it shows where all the community amenities and entry features are. A lot going on here and I know open space is always a big topic. If you look, there's an awful lot of green up there. And we like it that way and we hope you like it that way as well. So this is a very important slide to the discussion I brought up a minute ago about Delaware City Schools. This is just Terra Alta. So this is just the portion of the development that's in Delaware City Schools. And this breaks down for you, you'll notice the legend in the lower right-hand corner. This breaks down for you the housing types and the homes that will be available for move-up housing for people that currently live in Delaware and want to stay in Delaware and want to keep their children in Delaware City Schools. We firmly believe that this project, if done correctly and at the level we'd like to do it, we firmly believe it's going to be phenomenal for your school district here. It's going to help people be in the school district, stay in the school district, and come to the school district.
So just, just real quick to add, when you, when you look at those first two slides, you can take that first, that first slide I showed, which was Terra Alta, and you see the difference in the changes that we made. You go from a little pocket park with a swing set. And when we jump over here, what we've tried to do is we've tried to create a community where we have multiple pocket parks. You're going to see a pool and a clubhouse proposed. You're going to see a lot, different product sizes, different lot sizes, so that we have multiple products, be able to hit multiple price points within Delaware City for us. So it really makes it a very, very unique community, something that Delaware City is not seeing. And so that's what, that's what gets exciting about the project.
Hey Jim, let's stop a minute, go back to that slide a minute. Let's just talk a minute. I want you to understand and appreciate price points. Let's talk about price points just for a moment here.
Sure. Let me go through here. So right now, we're looking at the first, there's already a section which everyone knows is already paved. And that's that section where it says Section 173 Lots. Expected sales price in there is going to be right around 350. Same thing a little bit further north, that, that north section where it shows 58 by 130 and 62 by 130 to 91 lots, those are going to be focused on a empty nester ranch product. So that's going to be, yards are going to be maintained. That's going to be, we'll call it almost maintenance-free for, for our homeowners that live there. So it'll be, the homeowners association takes care of the grass, takes care of the, you know, this plowing and it's, you can, you can live there, you can go down to Florida. So it's designed for that move-down empty nester, we'll call them. If you look at everything that you see that's highlighted in the yellow, we've run it with different, we'll call it different price points, different lot sizes as well, so we can attract a lot more buyers based on the different products that we can offer in each one of those sections. And there's going to be 210 designed for move-up buyers for Delaware City. And price point average there, we're looking around 375 for average price point in those areas. So this is, I'll call it expensive housing that we're going to be putting in here.
And I think it's, we should stay and focus on the first two areas that Jim just talked about, those are going to attract, can be marketed to the empty nester cohort. We understand your need for move-up housing in Delaware City Schools. We're trying to accommodate that and listen to you and work with you on that. But I think it's important for you to note though, is if those first two areas are developed with empty nester housing, it really primes your school district with a lot of additional revenues with no children educated. So we should think about that. So they can build up the facilities and, and needs before they have the influx of children coming from a later substitution, which we think is important. So instead of not having the revenues yet and the kids educated, we've done just the opposite. Jim, why don't you explain the next slide?
So, and I'll just take you through the next ones. This is where the vision, this is where our vision starts. So when we looked at this, we looked at, when we brought in Terra Alta, Rogers, and Stockdale, we looked at, how do we, how do we build a cohesive neighborhood? How do we make this unique and special for Delaware City and the area? And we have already started on the entrance monumentation. This breaks it down, if you've been out there lately, they're about to start the irrigation for the, and it's a beautiful boulevard going up into the community itself. So this part is underway. This is, the rest of these slides that we talk about, this is where the vision comes in. And what we're looking to do is we're looking to change that little pocket park that you saw in Slide 1, and we're now looking to put a pool and a clubhouse in its place. These are some of the ideas that we've come up with as we look towards the other green space that's in the community. So we look to have an opportunity to put gazebos, pavilions, places for people to gather, places for people to get together in the community itself, walking trails, fire pits. We're looking at some amenities in terms of either a bocce or a pickleball coming up in the, in the community itself. Going away from the blue and the green swing sets and try to doing something a little bit more natural to blend in with the beautiful surrounding that the community offers. And these are all the things that we want to do that are different and unique that aren't currently approved.
So why don't you take the next few slides too of our move-up housing?
So right now, under contract is Ryan Holmes and Rockford. And so I had them give us a sample of the houses that they are proposing for these areas. And these are some of the selections.
For the move-up market.
For the move-up market. For the move-up market.
And once again, those price points in those houses, Jim?
Those were 375 would be our average.
And the next slide is just a notation to you about the benefits of the signal schools that, once again, our development has been properly.
Can we go back to that slide for one second? Where's the ranches?
This was just for the, this was just for the move-up housing.
Okay.
We're happy to provide that to you, but we were trying to really key in on the move-up.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just, this is a benefit slide that if we provide you a move-up housing and that this project, if done right and it's fully developed, would yield over 1.3 million of new income taxes to the city. And the next slide is a little hard to read on the screen, but I think you can read it on your, on your handouts within your packet today. It shows you, and it breaks down that the total estimated project fees to be paid to the city of Delaware over developing this project are in excess of 13 and a half million dollars. And the total annual estimated income tax paid to the city is 1.7 plus million dollars. So a pretty big impact on your budgets, pretty big impact on the economic well-being in healthier city. Members of our team prepared this, if there's particular questions on that, happy to answer those for you. The next slide is simply a proposed sequence of events. If we could convince you to move forward with us on this exciting project, it simply shows you the process to go through. And I know you've done this before and you've done other sorts of entitlement incentive projects. You know, there's a series of hearings and a series of resolutions and ordinances that you guys have to prove you've discussed. This basically shows you, if we started tonight with, with the petition, which we haven't done, that it would take us till essentially the end of August to be final. So it's a long and somewhat arduous project, process, and we would, if we can see our way clear to convince you to work with us on this, we can, we can promise you we'll try to make it as easy and freely as possible. There is a lot, there are a lot of steps yet to go through that this thing done. The next slide's an interesting slide. One of the unique characteristics that we're proposing at Terra Alta is that this community authority acts more like a, well, I'll call a super homeowners association. That has a lot of attributes and benefits to it. It still is a community authority, but what it also has, it has continuity of life and it is the, it is a major financing mechanism for the people who live in this community throughout its life, which of course be in the opportunity. What's interesting, if you look at this, one, one aspect of that, it's interesting, if you look at this slide, it shows you that by creating a community authority, we can have savings to our residents of about $300 per unit per year just in not paying taxes on open space. I can tell you, what's, what's interesting is, because the reaction you usually get is, well, we want those taxes and I like those taxes. I can tell you over time in big master-planning communities like this, the residents will ultimately end up on your doorstep because they will say, I have, for example, entrance features that are being taxed and they're costing me money to live here, but yet I'm paying tax on the house I live in. So it's, it's a rather esoteric point, but the point is this, that when you take a piece of farm ground and you develop it into a hundred-plus-million-dollar project like this will be, the value moves with the houses. The amenities and the open features are simply attributes that get their value from the value of the houses upon which they sit. And we think it's a very important point. And long-term, we think it adds to a more viable community and one where the community authority can help support the ongoing life of the community and people that live there get a vote and be a part of the decisions in that regard. The next page is the laundry list, and I'll tell you, it's a laundry list of development costs that developers would like to see reimbursed out of the community authority dollars upfront. So that's to say that there are been a, to, to bring to the city of Delaware and its residents, all of the attributes you just saw and all of the enhanced features that Jim just went over with you, to bring that best-of-class community here, there's a lot of cost. And this addresses a lot of that cost that the developer will be putting into this project. And so the community authority serves several purposes. One is a finance mechanism to help pay for some of these excess costs of development to bring this best-of-class project to the city. It also, as we just discussed, puts up super homeowners association place for the residents that long-term has some savings to them. And it also provides that long-term mechanism for the health and well-being of the community. And the last slide simply shows that at different millages, what the capital financing potential would be for the project. So you can see that with different rates of millage, there's a higher capacity for capital financing. So this addresses this list we looked at for cheap pay. And we spent a lot of time with your city manager and his staff looking at different millage rates and saying, what's the right millage and how do we do this and how, how can we make this fair and how can this not adversely impact other needs of the city, including, you know, potential income tax increases in the future, that sort of thing? How do we do this to be fair to everybody? So in conclusion, we'd like to have you consider working with us, creating this community authority. It is not, it is not an either-or, but it is an enhancement. It is, we think we can bring you a better community. We can think we can add that best-of-class aspect to it that we can't afford to do right now without this. We think it brings to bear a really interesting model going forward for the community as a super homeowners association. And I think it's just good development principles. We're happy to answer questions any of you might have, happy to talk about next steps with you. We've been meeting with the city manager and his staff to talk about those next steps. We would like to start that process.
We have three minutes before our [inaudible].
A lot of stuff to digest here too.
What? It doesn't matter. Pardon?
There's a lot of stuff to digest here too.
I know. So, I mean, does anybody have a quick question? We can talk about it at a later date.
So how many mills are you asking for?
We would like to go at seven and a half mills. We realized 10's too high and we spent some time talking with your city manager and staff.
So that would be for, so what happens after you collect all the money for the NCA? I mean, is this?
Well, the NCA will, will last forever, Ms. Keller.
Okay.
And so what happens is once, once you've financed and pay off those improvements we talked about, then it stays in place to repaint the clubhouse, to redo the pool, to keep the mowing on the open space open. It stays in place long-term throughout the life of the project.
So is this the new homeowners association of the future?
Maybe it's the super homeowners association of the future. It's essentially, they would be paying both homeowners association dues and the NCA, arguably a lesser HOA because the NCA is picking up costs that might otherwise be allocated to the, to the HOA.
You always have to have an HOA.
Yeah.
For governance purposes.
So I guess my concern with this is, we had a situation where we were trying to pass a road levy. City needed, and still does need, critical revenue for that. People who are already paying into an existing NCA were less than thrilled about having your taxes go up because they said, we're already paying more. And we had difficulty garnering support for critical city needs. So my concern here is swimming pools and things like that are excellent. My gut feeling is they belong in homeowners associations and save NCA's for
Yeah.
Public infrastructure needs.
By the way, we spent a lot, I know we got a very short period of time here. We spent a lot of time talking with, with Mr. Holman and staff about that issue. And we understand the clean road NCA and the dynamics of that and its impact on your income tax levy. We do think there's some distinctions here. People who choose to live here and enjoy these amenities are paying directly for those amenities. I think when you look at, at the clean road NCA, and I'm not, I don't know that much about it, but you know, you've got people that rent an NCA paying for a public road for the city that other people don't have to share in. Whereas here, you've got improvements and amenities that people pay for and choose to pay for to live there. And we think that's a big distinction. We also think that, given the price points here, that, I think that, that the statistics would, would bear this out, that people in the income tax, in the income ranges at the price of these houses, they recognize the value of city income taxes and school levies and those types of things. They're more, they're more willing to vote for them. And there's a lot of communities around central Ohio, we could point to, that have NCA charges higher than this to pass every income tax levy and pass every school levy they have because of the cohort of people who are choosing to live there that can afford it and realize the value of those things.
Any other quick comments? Okay. We will look it over and discuss it. We need to move on. If you want to stay later for more questions, council can do that, but I think we need to digest all this.
Okay.
Before we, do you all agree?
Sounds like maybe we better come back. Sounds like that may be a better to do some more questions and answers. If that'd make sense to do more in another forum, we'll just stay tonight. Well, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Elena, if you'll read item nine, which is the 7:30 public hearing, a third reading, please.
Resolution Number 18-29, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a joint economic development district of the JED contract for virtue [inaudible].
Mr. Solomon?
Do we have the, can you put the exhibits up on the screen, please?
Yeah, wait till you call it up. Okay. There's some things I have to read as well. Counsel, while he's pulling it up, earlier this, in the last packet, in this packet, I gave an amendment that we are requesting you make. Basically, it's a technical amendment because the rest of the paperwork was all consistent and there was just one piece that didn't reflect the change in the law. I have a copy right handy if someone needs to make that motion. But basically, it's a motion to revise the tax collection schedule to be in conformity with the JED contract and economic development plan and to approve that new schedule to be on file with the clerk. So that's the one amendment that we are going to ask that you make. Otherwise, this is the public hearing for the JED. I have some recommendations that I will read in there as well, but I figure we should let the, the public kind of go first.
Yeah, or maybe the township.
Yeah, they're here, so.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Well, I was basically, by the way, my name's Bill Holtry. I'm one-third of the trustees.
Okay. And your address for the record, I'm sorry.
8205 Dustin Road.
Thank you.
Galena, Ohio, 43074. House with a blue roof. House with a blue roof. I'm here to answer your questions. I think this is the third reading, and it's a pretty exciting time for the economy and for Delaware and for the township, so fire away. I'll go with some answers.
Phil, it might be helpful, perhaps, to just provide a brief overview of JED 1 and what that included, and what essentially is the JED Area 2, and what you envision that would go into that area.
To visit JED 1, consider yourself going east on 36, 37, and when you hit the Burger King, you turn right, and you go back to the mall, the outlet mall. That is 58 acres out of the 215. The other 75 acres that's attached to that tract for the mall is everything east of there to South Kalina Road. And the two parcels north of there, between 36, 37, and that parcel where the mall is, is part of JED 1. That's 215 acres. We came to you originally with the idea of having more than one JED, maybe three, maybe four over time. And what we sat down to do, we developed a planned multi-use development district. We put together a district for entertainment purposes, put it in there, kind of laid over it. It gives us 15 liquor licenses to distribute now. And with our zoning and everything, we thought the best thing to do was to hopefully include everything that we ever wanted to have in a JED and put it in JED 2. So the JED 2 is every commercial corner that we have included in that, up to 575, 574.12 additional acres. That takes all the land now, both JEDs, would be all of North Stark, everything south of 36, east of 71, west of South Kalina Road, down to the border of where the mall is.
Truly the
That's a lot of land.
The light purple is really the area we're talking about, I believe. The dark purple is the mall and the area that the, what property do you call that, Phil?
The dark purple is JED 1.
Right.
Is JED 2.
You call it pink, I call it lavender.
If I come from Pennsylvania, everybody back there is colorblind.
And Mayor, Councilmember Mayor, when we talked about the motion that hopefully we'll make after the hearing, the law used to be that the purple residential is not even allowed in there. But now with the change in the pink, lavender, light purple, resident is allowed in there, and so that's why the documents have always referred to that. We just missed it with this one piece.
But it would still be in a commercial district, so it's taxable income if you live in that district. So that enhances the ability to have increased income. I didn't pass that, by the way, just in case I was done with our pay grade.
I'm not thrilled with a JED residential. I would rather that be removed. I don't want people in Sundar to pay us tax. Sorry.
People in Sundar are not going to pay you tax. People who live in a commercial district would.
Right, okay.
I think the distinction here is if apartments go in, and that could happen, that the tenants would pay, I believe, the
The way the new law reads, that's true. They would pay an income tax.
Right.
And I think one more distinction, at least as I understand it, is this will be in place before those are built, so you would know that going in, as opposed to some of the JEDs that got some negative publicity earlier where they took an existing place and decided, we're going to add the jet on top of it, and everyone is there is like, wait, you're adding a new tax to me. Everyone moving in, this will be in place before it's even built.
Currently, there's no income tax there. So typically, people that would move in that particular area where you see the pink and the purple are either going to work in Columbus or in that direct area there, and they're going to pay taxes out of their paycheck anyway, or share it with Columbus. So I don't think anybody's going to be, I'm not trying to convince people to move there and pay taxes. I'm misunderstanding. But I think anybody that would want to live there won't be turned away because they're going to pay taxes someplace else if they don't, if they don't pay taxes there. They just aren't. So I wouldn't get too much heartburn over that myself. Besides, that's an income. Somebody brought up to me today, because this all came up because of laws change, that they expected 1,200 to 1,800 people living in apartments in, not south of 36, 37. We actually don't anticipate any apartments in that JED area, in that area, but north in the North Stark area. They anticipate a combination of what they refer to as rooftops and commercial development and offices. So they anticipate up to, up to 1,200 apartments. Most likely, single-bedroom or two-bedroom apartments, more of an upscale 1,800, $2,000 rentals. Now, people that live in that area, that are going to live in those kind of apartments, they're going to have to have a pretty decent income to live in that area. So it's important that the other area there is going to be supported by large office space or entertainment of some nature, I would think. We've had several people come to us with developmental ideas, mostly retail at first for the first couple of years when we were working on JED 1. And we all know how the internet has put the damper on retail development, but things are changing now. We're starting to see things change. We know rooftops have to come in, but we're seeing now a different kind of developer coming and talking to us, to the point where something large could happen in the very near future. It could develop a lot of jobs.
I'm just going to say, in our conversations with the township over the last couple of weeks about this change in the law, it really, I think, brought to light that, to the extent that there are, there is residential units in there and that we're collecting on those residential units, that that's generally a higher level of effort with respect to our tax office. And therefore, the distribution that is currently proposed at the 4% for administrative fee, for the administrative fee on the gross revenue, I think we'd need to have a discussion about that. And I believe we're going to recommend to council, if you're agreeable to making this change, that we put language in the contract explicitly that talks about that. If it is costing us more than we're taking in, then it's, at that point, it's kind of unbalanced, so.
The way I look at that is, it's something we can't answer right now.
Right.
We have no idea. And I think we should put some kind of an agreement together that, I don't know, in a certain period of time, five years later, or something, we review, and if the costs are there and you have higher administrative costs, it should be dealt with. I know, but at the same time, too, we don't know what we're dealing with. I took a simple calculation of, and I used the top line, 1,800 people at $50,000 a year is going to generate $65,000 for you just in admin fees a year. I don't know if that's enough to collect in just the apartments there or not, but it also generates between $200,000 and $400,000 of income besides that, so, and that's your share. Irregardless of what we do there, we've put, we haven't put a cap, but we have a strong recommendation to the developers there that only a certain percentage is going to be in rooftops. Everything else is going to be in commercial development. Because like you, we don't want there to be only rooftops. We want there to be more development to be able to support. We need more commercial development in our township, like you need commercial development as that balance. So we encourage the developers to work with us on not having more than, 1,800 would be way probably more than max. We're thinking more like 1,200 ourselves. Do we have an option of eliminating the tax on residents who live in the commercial development from a legal point of view?
Well, we are.
So that's off the table, right?
I was, I might have misspoke when I first brought this up. I thought it was the JED change, law changed so we were allowed to tax residential, law changed to allow residential in the JED, which sounds like a distinction or a difference, but it's not that we couldn't tax it before, they just weren't allowed to be in there. Now the JED district taxes anything in that district, and residential is allowed in the district.
So we would have, we wouldn't have an option about taxing the residential?
I could look into it, but I don't think we would. If that land is in it, we would not have that option.
That being said, though, essentially, I mean, the developers are telling us, and what they proposed to us right now, there's 5,000 jobs coming in to the commercial area. So if you had 1,200 to 1,800 people living there, take 7,000 people times whatever their income is, times .018, and then divide that up accordingly, that's a serious amount of income.
I would caution you, it doesn't work that way, though. And I know, just like the numbers with the original JED, we had these huge numbers, especially with the residential, what happens if they work in Columbus and pay Columbus tax, reduce credits. I heard earlier about empty nesters, they don't even have income, so that's not even going to be taxed. I would, it's probably 20 to 30% maybe, but be cautious in some of the numbers that you preliminary throw out there, because it's, doesn't materialize.
30% is more than zero, I can tell you that. It's a significant amount of money, no matter how you look at it, when you have that many people working in that area, so.
Mayor, I apologize. Have we opened the public hearing?
We have. We're, listen to the applicant first.
Okay. I'm not going to read these until we open the hearing.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant's thoughts?
I mean, I struggle with this because we represent citizens in Delaware. And for citizens in Delaware, we're getting something for nothing here.
You don't like that?
I do. Don't like the fact that the citizens who live there don't get representation for the taxes that they're paying. We fought a whole revolutionary war over this concept, so I have a struggle.
But that's income tax where you work. Work in Columbus, pay Columbus income tax. It's not right, but that's how it is. You're not represented in Columbus.
You can share with Columbus, or you can share with Berkshire, or you can share with both, where you don't have to share. That's your, that's where it boils down.
I mean, somebody else will take it.
I know.
There will be someone behind the city of Delaware to take this if we don't.
Yeah, and that's what we discussed early on a year ago, was discussions with West Carroll and other communities, and recognizing that we still have an interest in the dollars that we generate for the 36, 37 quarter that helps us. We've already realized some of those dollars to offset costs associated with those projects.
Well, we made the decision to come here for JED 1 and 2. We made the decision to come here because we thought it was the right thing to do to share with a neighbor. It wasn't about money, because we could have made more money going someplace else. There's no question about that. But frankly, to give you his first option, that was the right thing to do. I still stand by that. I'm kind of struck at odds here about what is the big deal about this? You get either free money or no money, and it's a lot.
And at the end of the day, and maybe you can answer this question, I think I know the answer. Those people who are in this JED, they're also representatives of the township, so they elect you guys, right? So if they're mad at, you're going to hear it.
I get phone calls, you won't.
Well, I appreciate you coming to us first. It's nice to have good neighbors. We're just making sure that we're not taking taxes that we, you know, it's just trying to be the right thing in my mind.
Oh, you can just collect it and give it right back to us.
36, 37 needs work.
We're open to your cooperative neighborhood.
Any other questions for the applicant before we open it up? Thoughts? Okay. Thank you. We'll see what the public has to say.
My pleasure.
Okay, so you want to read something before we open this up to the public?
You can open it up first, we'll see what they say.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward on this matter at this time?
I'll hear for something.
Okay, nobody wants to hear it, so go ahead and read it.
So, and just to talk to you a little bit about procedure, this is our public hearing, where you're not going to vote on anything tonight except for hopefully the amendment I distributed. This is also a process where council through our public hearing and the township through their public hearing can hear testimony, people's recommendations, and that allows a little bit of room to come up with the final product that suits everybody's needs. So I have two recommendations. One is the JED contract and supporting documents were drafted envisioning unanimous consent from both the property owners and business owners within that JED. So I recommend, should a property owner or business owner not consent to the JED, we will recommend that the corresponding property be deleted from the JED. And so that just kind of goes with, says we don't want to force anybody into this JED. So if someone, there's documents that they want to pull out, we would recommend that we allow them to come out. And then the second recommendation, this goes to what Tom talked about regarding that fee. We don't know what residential impact will have on collection, so recommend just inserting some language under section 4.3 AI of the JED contract, that in the event services rendered by the city exceed 4% of the gross revenues, the parties will make a, will renegotiate the, hold on, I lost my paper there. We'll renegotiate, oh, there it is, sorry. We'll renegotiate the payments outlined in section 4.3 A1 and come to a mutually satisfactory agreement regarding the same. We've been good partners with them so far. We still have enough information now to change that number. It might not be necessary, it might be. So we just want to have a language in that contract that allows that reopen or occur if we need it. And that's all I have. That plus the amendment if someone needs to hand it to them, but.
Any questions? Comments? All right, now we'll close the public hearing, since there's nobody here.
Line it up.
Line it up. And we'll take this, do you want to vote on the amendment? You just wait.
I think it would be helpful to vote on the amendment because we need to get the package of materials completely ready and have that on file, so I'm going to look at it. So I can either read it, or I can hand a piece of paper to somebody, whatever works best for you all.
I think the next step is, if you vote tonight, the township is able to prepare the petitions that go to the property owners indicating that they're proposed to be part of this JED district, and it gives them the opportunity to object or not object. That process needs to get going. Then at some point, we've got to come back and we've got to vote on the actual agreement, so.
Okay. Let's make a motion for this amendment.
What do you want to have there and read it into the record?
I'll do that. This will be a motion to revise the JED tax collection schedule to be in conformity with the JED contract and the economic development plan, and to approve and adopt the amended JED tax collection schedule now on file with the city clerk.
I move to accept the amendment.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer. Second, Mr. Browning. Any further discussion? I'll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Regal?
Yes.
That's it, we don't have to vote on it tonight.
Good luck. Vice Mayor?
Thank you.
Okay, item, I'll do item 10. Item 10, which is the public hearing, 7:35, we're late, sorry. Will you read this into the record, please?
Ordinance number 18-47, in ordinance approving a conditional use permit request by Delaware Bible Church for a temporary trailer modular classroom on approximately 7.53 acres on R3, one-family residential district and located at 45 Bell Avenue.
Hi, Mayor, members of council. This is a conditional use permit for the Delaware Bible Church. They're looking to add a classroom space in a modular trailer fashion, in a temporary fashion. They are growing and anticipate additional enrollment, and until they have an opportunity to make a permanent improvement, which they have indicated that they would like to do in the future, they want a particular amount of time, as we have a condition in your ordinance that is up to three years from the date of your approval, to utilize the temporary trailer classroom. So the property is at Bell and Sandusky. It is in a number of different zoning categories, including B3 and R3, single-family residential. Here's an aerial view of the site. It's probably easiest to explain that the trailer is proposed for this location of the site. There is an existing trailer there as well, classroom, but around this horseshoe-shaped access drive is where this current proposal is. It's a little bit harder to read with all the lines and stuff on there, maybe a little bit easier in your packet, but you could see highlighted in Maybe a little bit easier in your packet, but you could see highlighted in yellow of the proposed trailer location. There are a few conditions that are imposed in the ordinance. Your planning commission did recommend approval, six, nothing, as does your staff. Rapid answer, any questions you might have? I would just point out that the zoning code allows for these in these zoning districts, and really the question is the amount of time that they're allowed to be there. So as I say, the condition in your ordinance now is for up to three years for the modular trailer. They could come back and ask for renewal or an amendment to that, but I think the long-term plan is for a permanent improvement. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do you know if they made the application that they needed to make to the federal regarding?
For the building code. There are a little bit, the commercial building code has changed for the state of Ohio starting this year, and will make this project frankly more difficult for the school. They will have to, assuming they gain your approval tonight, they will have to go to the Board of Building Standards in all likelihood and request some variances from that new code. And so they have not done that yet, to my knowledge. There's a question of, and there's conditions in your approval that would require that they obtain those variances. If they don't obtain those variances, then presumably the project wouldn't move forward in its current form.
So are the restrooms going to be required in this? Or are they going to be allowed to use the school?
Well, I don't think we know the answer to that because the Board of Building Standards has to make that determination upon the variance request.
Questions by council? Okay, we'll open it to the public. Anyone in the public that would like to come forward on this at this time?
Hello?
Hello?
I'm Scott TD. I'm the pastor at Delaware Bible Church. And I, my apologies to you, our representative that was going to come and, and be with you, be with you here tonight. Had a medical emergency. He's doing okay, but he called me and said, need to appear. So I'm just really here to answer any questions that you might have. The good news is Delaware Christian School is growing, and our enrollment already for next year exceeds what we can handle if we don't get this permit to put up this building. But we're willing to work with you, whatever we need to do to make, make this happen. We are putting together a strategic planning team to, in fact, we're meeting in July to, to, to consider alternatives, whether we're going to try to expand on another location or build onto our current, build onto our current building. That's all kind of up in the air right now, but we need to get going because it's, the school is growing fast.
Any questions for the applicant?
Appreciate it.
Anyone else in the public that would like to come forward? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
I'm okay with suspending the rules. I move to suspend the rules on ordinance 18-47.
I have a motion by Mrs. Keller. A second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Regal?
Yes.
Move for approval of the ordinance number 18-47.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller. Second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Regal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Elaine, if you'll please read item 11. 11 in the record. 11 and 12?
Yeah, I do 12, too, please.
Ordinance number 18-48. An ordinance approving a rezoning amendment request by Planned Communities Inc. for property owned by Frances and Mary Lou Wilgus on approximately 89.618 acres. Parcels number 419-220-02-005-000 and 419-220-02-007-000 from A1 Agricultural District to M1 PMU Light Manufacturing with a planned mixed-use overlay district at 2781 Airport Road, located at the western terminus of Sawmill Parkway, east of Section Line Road, south of Airport Road, and north of the future extended Sawmill Parkway. Ordinance number 18-49. An ordinance approving a conditional use permit request by Planned Communities Inc. allowing the placement of a PMU, planned mixed-use overlay district to be established for property owned by Frances and Mary Lou Wilgus on approximately 89.618 acres. Parcel number 419-220-02-005-000 and 419-220-02-007-000 at 2781 Airport Road, located at the western terminus of Sawmill Parkway, east of Section Line Road, south of Airport Road, and north of the future extended Sawmill Parkway.
Please, Bill. Thank you. Mr. Eflin?
Madam Mayor, members of council, these cases are as read. We've been talking about the Wilgus property during the annexation process that has been ongoing for the last several months. That concluded at your last meeting. And following closely on its heels is the rezoning amendment and conditional use permit that's required place a planned mixed-use overlay district. This is for approximately the 90 acres at the end, western end of Sawmill Parkway, as we all know. Currently, it is in the township, and so that's the reason for bringing the rezoning forward. It's essentially tabletop farmland with a few improvements on the property today. Our comprehensive plan, future land use map, calls for light manufacturing in the area with a PMU overlay. There is a specific zoning text, as you know, that accompanies the request and outlines the specific uses in addition to other elements of zoning within that text as well. This is consistent with the properties to the east that are similarly zoned as well. Your planning commission did recommend unanimous approval of this, as do we as staff. At this time, we did something slightly different than we normally would do, given that this is industrial property, and we don't know yet whether this would be occupied by one user for all 90 acres or by a series of users for smaller acreage than that. There is no preliminary plan with this comprehensive plant, or with this zoning amendment. In fact, the text requires a preliminary plan and a final development plan, and then any plaits that might be required in the future once end users are identified and brought forward. And that's really the nature of, due to the nature of the uses out here, we could have gone through a lengthy exercise of a preliminary plan that in all likelihood probably would have changed by the time we get to end users. So that's the only difference between this and what you're used to seeing with regard to PMU overlay zoning texts and plans. Recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Eflin? Is the applicant here tonight? Would they like to add anything? If you'll please give us your name and address for the record.
Jack Brickner, 110 Northwoods Boulevard, Columbus, Ohio. Evening. I think we're close to coming conclusion on this property here. We've been working with Dave and his staff and, and different other members of the city as far as, you know, Mr. Holman and his group, engineering, the development group and stuff, and appreciate their input and guidance over the last year or so we've been working on this project. So really don't have anything to add to the discussions. The property, as David mentioned, has been annexed. We're looking forward to completing and the zoning, and then we can get on to the sales and marketing of the property. So thank you very much. Appreciate your consideration and direction here. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward since this is a public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And I say we vote on this just so Elaine doesn't have to read those one more time. I know. Your motion?
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 18-48. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer. A second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Regal?
Yes.
I move for the approval of ordinance 18-48. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer. Second by Mr. Hellinger. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Regal?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 18-49. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer. Second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Regal?
Yes.
Move for the approval of ordinance 18-49. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer. Second by Mr. Hellinger. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Regal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now Elaine, will you read 13, 14, and 15 in the record? At least there are parcel numbers. Sorry.
Ordinance number 18-50. An ordinance for Manos Properties for approval of a rezoning amendment for the Weslin Inn on approximately 1.09 acres. Parcel number 519-433-04-005-000 and 519-433-04-002 from POI Planned Office Institutional District and R3 one family residential district to POI and R3 PMU Plan Mixed Use Overlay District at 235 and 239 West Williams Street. Ordinance number 18-51. An ordinance for Manos Properties for approval of a conditional use permit allowing the placement of a PMU Plan Mixed Use Overlay District to be established for the Weslin Inn on approximately 1.09 acres. Parcels 519-433-04-005-000 and 519-433-04-002 at 235 and 239 West Williams Street. An ordinance number 18-52. An ordinance for Manos Properties for approval of a preliminary development plan for the Weslin Inn on approximately 1.09 acres. Parcels 519-433-04-005-000 and 519-433-04-002 on property zone POI and R3 PMU Plan Mixed Use Overlay District at 235 and 239 West Williams Street.
Good job. Mr. Eflin?
Good morning, Mayor. Members of council. This is for rezoning, conditional use permit, preliminary development plan for the Weslin Inn. This would be located at properties of 235 and 239 West Williams Street. Now, this is immediately, this is the old Perkins house, the historic Perkins home. We'll get into a little bit more detail as we move along. The property is currently zoned in two different zoning districts, primarily Planned Office Institutional. That's the old Perkins home. That zoning district, it's worth noting, does allow conditionally, as a conditional permitted use, a hotel and motel with dining facilities in it. That's the purple on this map. The yellow on this map is R3 single-family, and that property would be used in support of this application for a portion, the majority of the parking lot for the inn that's proposed. Aerial photograph, should we need to refer to it, but you can see the Perkins property and the property to the west, which includes a single-family home. Our understanding is that the applicant has provided signed letters that the property to the west of that one, he has an option to purchase as well, should he be successful with these applications before you. But you can also see the edge of the large Stuyvesant Hall, 21,000-plus square feet and 200-plus students, in addition to a number of other facilities in that facility. And so this is really kind of an area of transition. Pause for a moment on our comprehensive plan, only to tell you that in working with the applicant, they are not proposing a comprehensive plan amendment. We have had a number of cases before you last year and this year in areas where we are on kind of the edge of the map, so to speak, and in areas of transition. And we did this very intentionally, working with the applicant, to indicate that the uses really will be, although this would be one parcel at the end of the day, the uses proposed would really be the inn in the blue portion of this and the parking lot in the, in the gold portion of this. There are some, there are some text in the proposed PMU text which would restrict the gold portion of this property or the parking lot to really only just that use, and not allow extension of the hotel or any use in the future into that portion of the property. And you can, I'm sure you've read through the PMU text at this time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on that. Just going to click through a series of photographs, and I think you can see the nature of the historic building and the Perkins property here. It really is a prominent building in our community. You can also see the, a little bit of the state of disrepair, at least on the outside of this property. And I think you can see the, I will say perhaps the lack of historic character of the addition off the back of this building as well. Just some more photographs of the property for you. I'm looking east up Williams Street on the bottom of the page. Again, more photographs of the property, and you're looking east and west along Williams Street on the photographs on the bottom of the page, again, should, should we need to refer to them. One thing you can see here is that the property is relatively flat up until I point just behind the sidewalk where it does dive down to Williams Street. In effect, these photographs northward show you how the houses across Williams Street really sit below this property. And the photographs on the bottom, again, the one on the left is pointing kind of northeast, and the one on the bottom right is the single-family home that would be removed and would be built into part of a parking lot in support of this use. So colored site plan here to try to just orient ourselves on the site. Again, north is up here, Williams Street to the top of the screen. You can see a turn lane improvement proposed. The details of that, we are at preliminary, so the details of that would have to come forward later. However, a turn lane would need to be included. That might necessitate some changes of parking. We had a lot of conversation about that at the planning commission, either on the north side of Williams Street with some cut-in parking or on a, an improvement really on the south side of Williams Street. You have a condition of approval that allows for both of those opportunities. If cut-in parking were to be allowed, it would have to also go through Parking and Safety Committee for approval, and the condition requires that the, the property owners, the parking and, and the property owners that those would be in front of would need to be in support of that as well. So it's, has some options in that regard. But the western side of the property would allow for a full access drive, and the eastern side of the property would allow for out-only. In this case, you're into the turn lane for the adjacent street. And so Bill could certainly speak to more of that, the reasoning for that, but that's essentially the reason in this case to provide for a full circulation of the site, but also safe ingress egress from Williams Street and the improvements that would be required. You can see the approximate 6,000-plus square foot development proposed in a series of colors here. The blue represents the, really the historic Perkins home footprint. The yellow represents the addition that would be the inn, and the Perkins home would be renovated as well as part of the inn. And the black footprint inside the yellow is the current addition to the Perkins home. I think one thing, I just give credit to Mr. Manos for this at planning commission, and I'll do it again here for you. He's come into us and, and from the very beginning, he's had a mind to renovate and restore the original Perkins home, which does not come without cost. Probably a million dollars plus just for that portion of the project is estimated at this point in time, let alone the addition of the inn. And we think that's a pretty significant gesture. He does not have to, it's not in a historic district, and he does not have to retain that property for whatever he may do with the property, whether he gains approval here tonight or not, or in subsequent meetings. There are 43 rooms proposed and 47 parking spaces on site. One space per room is required, plus a space for each employee. One space per room is required, plus a space for each employee. So this complies with the code in that regard. We have, there were some questions raised at planning commission relative to the tree counts in this area. Council is well aware, with planned mixed-use overlays, there's a schedule for tree preservation in addition to tree replanting that's contained within each PMU that's brought before you, and subject to review by planning commission and you and any members of the public. This is consistent with your prior decisions with planned mixed-use overlays. We have double-checked the numbers, both with our staff, Parks and Recreation, Natural Resources staff, sorry, and the city arborists, and we believe our numbers are correct, that are contained within your report with respect to the schedule given in the text. So preliminary landscaping plan helps us illustrate not only the perimeter landscaping, which would be set back, but from the parking lot, again, he hasn't, our understanding is he has an option on the property to the west here. But privacy fencing would be included along this side of the property, in addition to a landscaping buffer. One of the recommended conditions is that the fencing go on the, you know, the inner part of this and the landscaping on the outer part of that border and buffer as well. There was an emergency access only for a fire department EMS, should it be necessary through the, through this area to the Ohio Wesleyan property, and that's really to separate the two properties. But it provides that sort of third means in and out of this property as well, should it be required. There's a seating element and sort of a garden element on this side, the west side of the proposal. This would be the primary drop-off side, although there are entrances on both sides of the building, from the parking lot and from the canopy area, and there's another seating area here as well. So on to the preliminary plan. And again, the house would be restored back to its really original condition. The inside would be renovated for the inn. There would be a separation, a clear separation between that and the new inn portion. However, the inn would pick up on some of the banding and lines of the original Perkins' home. This really cannot be recreated today in terms of its architecture, and so the decision was made by the applicant to not attempt to do that and have some sort of comical-looking addition on the back, but to try to pick up the important elements of material and brick, some of the banding and color changes, in addition to the limestone wainscoting, pulling that up some of the elevator shaft, as you can see here. This is the east elevation, or looking back towards Stuy Hall, if you will. The inn would be three stories, no taller than 38 feet, and the prominent element of the tower on the original Perkins' home would be the tallest thing on the site. I will run through the other elevates, the western elevation mirrors the other, as does the south elevation. These are all contained within your packet. Your planning commission did recommend unanimous approval of this case, as do we as staff. And with that, I know the aisle stop, I know the applicant has a presentation to make, and there are obviously a number of members of the public that I presume would like to make comments as well. So I'm happy to make, answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Dave before the applicant comes up?
Just one real quick, Dave, did you say that the, for the Perkins' house is now technically a zone where it could be used as hotels, I would say?
Yeah, the POI district allows as conditionally permitted, a hotel with or without a restaurant. The proposal in this case is without a restaurant, just to be clear.
May I ask a question? So is it conceivable, though, that that could be approved without a parking lot? Or does the code require parking?
Code requires parking for an inn or hotel, and so, given the size of the site and its orientation, some of the configuration elements that we talked about, it'd account for parking somewhere. So we acquired the property to the west in support of that.
Would it also be possible, if the building wasn't so large, to include parking directly on the site where it would be zoned? Are you following what I'm saying?
Yeah. It could be, Councilwoman. That would obviously cut the number of rooms down, and there is a pro forma in the economy here between number of rooms to put in the investment that's required for the Perkins' home, let alone for the addition, and also parking site. And one of the things that we had talked about early on was trying to hold the existing building line where it is, so it doesn't go any further west, and use the parking lot really as the transition back into the neighborhood, rather than have the more intense building use over there.
I guess just what I'm trying to consider for myself is, yes, a hotel is technically allowed on this site per the zoning with a conditional use permit.
Correct.
However, to approve one of this size, it would require a zone change because there is no room on the site without.
Correct. There's no, as a practical matter, there's no room.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understood that correctly.
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Council members? Okay, would the applicant like to come forward at this time? For the record, if you'll please give us your name and address.
Joe Place, 10 West North Street in Ostrander, here with Plan for Land.
I'm Jim Manos, 5973 McEwen Court, Dublin, Ohio, Delaware County.
We're joined today by Nick Elmason, Elmason Engineering, or engineer for the project, and Pat Manley, our architect for the project. Amy Dutt did the landscaping plans, not here this evening, but we can attempt to answer any questions on her behalf. If you don't want, I'll just kind of give a little overview. Dave's presentation, I think, was a great synopsis of where we're at. It is an area of transition. We've looked at the property itself without the additional parking, and because of circulation needs for around this building, fire safety access, actually, the main entrance to this property will be west, where the house sits today. So it was a safety measure that a home was acquired, that was the main entrance. We originally wanted the entrance to be on the eastern side, which is now a exit only. So we went through that. The discussion on permitted use within the conditional use permit today, I think the interest was to share parking with Wesleyan, but because of the distinctive, different uses there, it does need to have separate parking, so this works best for that configuration. We also expanded the property to the west to add an additional buffer, so the sit-back to that existing house that was there today is obviously much less than what it will be from the future house. And as Dave stated, Jim's got an option on the additional house, whether to incorporate that as lodging for an employee or otherwise a rental or something that could work well with this site. But it would not be a part of the hotel use. It would not be bound to any of the commercial standards that were laid out there. We went through the, as far as dumpster location, we modified that to be trash cans, to be more conducive to the adjoining neighbors. Also looked at dark sky compliant lighting, other things that we thought would be more in keeping with the residential characteristics of the neighborhood there. And last thing I wanted to state before kind of pass it on, I know you got some public comments tonight, but we've been working through the conditions from the planning commission. We don't have answers to all the questions there, but we can attempt to answer any items that we have coming up. I know part of the interest is to work with the residents along roadway regarding parking. The existing parking, if you went up that way, sticks out into the road, it's not bumped in, and I know there's obviously conflict that can occur because of that, but the interest is to bump in the parking in our discussions with the engineers department, and we'll try to work with that. So if we can bump in parking on the north side where it works, we want to preserve the trees and do what we can to make the street most conducive. So we mailed out letters to the neighbors that would be potentially affected, according to the engineer, on the north side of the street, and we'll wait to get comments back, but we look forward to addressing those. I know those were a big topic of conversation at the planning commission meeting, so we look to address that. The goal is not to lose any parking for residents, that parking would be for them, not necessarily for the hotel. And I know Jim's offered on the south side of the road, there might be an opportunity to add some additional parking there if needed, but ideally, we want to try to address their concerns and what they have on the north side first. So I know you're more than open to conversations as far as what we can do to modify the plan to meet individual needs. That's all we have. Unless I missed anything?
No. So we will do bump in parking on the north side or south side, wherever the residents want.
I appreciate you reaching out to them, too. That was really, really good on your hat.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant before we open up to the public? Okay, thank you.
I want to, I would like to add a few things that, the bed tax goes to the fair or the brown jug races, which I think is nice for them. And I also, you know, a lot of people, when they stay at hotels, they're eating there, drinking there, shopping there in that area. You know, the people that are coming here, going to Sunbury and Outby 71, and their shopping center and eating, et cetera, or they're going down to Lewis Center doing the same thing. So I think, you know, community-wise, it'll be good for the revenue. The only other thing I'd like to comment on is, the home was an existing site of a boarding house where 16 people lived. The house that I bought to the west of it contained four people, so it's a total of 20 people. Vacancy rate in this area is 35%, so with 43 rooms, less than 35% is 29. So there was 20 people there for umpteen years. Now there's going to be 29 on average, per se. So density-wise, I don't think it's a huge difference.
Mr. Manos, just real quickly, just, can you just talk about the property itself, whether you intend to brand it, and then your background in the hospitality field?
I do not plan on branding it. It's going to call the Westland Inn. I've already got a logo on that jazz. As far as my experience in hotel management, I do not own a hotel. I own numerous rental properties, storage facilities, homes, et cetera, et cetera. I do consider myself a great delegator. So I do have a few people that I don't want to publicly say because they're working at hotels right now, but I do have two people in mind that they're committed to doing this. It's going to be an upscale, nice hotel. You know, 43 rooms, there's 1,300 students, just to give you some useless information. If 43 parents come to see their kids, they're probably staying at my place. With 1,300 kids and all the students have to be on campus, and they're all right there. So.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Manos? Mr. Manos, sorry, real quick. Whenever I approach these projects, I always try to think if the building is going to be built, two houses from mine. And what would you say to those folks, or to me, that, so, okay, I'm going to build this?
Well, we, that's a great question, Jim. We did reach out to the 28 neighbors. Three came. I am compassionate about it. I'm not upset with them. You know, me personally, it's a rundown frat house, and I'm going to make it a first-class hotel. I am compassionate, those tree lines, I'm going to get fast-growing trees, and, you know, it's not going to be a cheap hotel. So, I mean, Ohio Wesleyan's one of the most expensive schools in the state of Ohio, and, you know, I invite concerns from the neighbors, if I can do anything to help. You know, if there's an noise issue, I know all are, we have low rating stuff, nothing on polls, and so I'm very compassionate about it. But I also, on the other hand, you know, this university was built in 1842, and my house was built in 1880, so these people came after that, so they knew what they're buying next to. You know, if you saw that one with the purple and the gold, that, you know, there's a lot of purple around them, so they knew that when they purchased their properties, with all due respect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open up to the public, and let's see if Tom Macklin signed in first. Tom, if you'd like to come forward and give us your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm Tom Macklin, 12 Montrose Avenue, Delaware, Ohio, and I have a number of concerns. To begin with, I am a neighbor of this property, and we were never notified by anybody. We saw the sign on Williams Street, you know, that's the only time that we knew this was going on, and reading it in the paper. We already have problems with getting in and out of our driveway on Williams Street because of the traffic, and I'm sure this is not going to lessen that. I'm not so sure about the parking. We heard that there was only going to be 29 and spaces for 43 rooms, and that just didn't add up to me. I mean, it just made no sense at all that, you know, that could be even considered, you know, let alone, you know, employees. So, you know, I don't know what it's going to do to the neighborhood, and I don't think that, you know, a hotel in the middle of a residential area is a good plan. Thank you.
And you did hear that was 47 parking spots?
I heard there was 47 tonight, yes.
Thank you.
My name is Roger Coke. I live at 125 North Liberty Street in Delaware. I have a continuing interest in historic preservation. I have spent 20 years on the Delaware City Historic Preservation Commission, and I'm on the board of the local historical society. But I'm not here to represent anybody but me, and the comments that I think you're going to hear from local residents are all valid as far as traffic and concerns with any new development. I've come pretty much to present the other side of the issue. Historic preservation is linked to, strongly linked to Delaware's current economic success, I think. The success of downtown Delaware is largely due to the fact that we had the foresight to create a historic district downtown and encourage restaurants and entertainment. Also, the prices of the homes in the historic northwest district are significantly outpacing the increase in values of the other housing in the city. So I think historic preservation and as a, as a local consideration is very important to the success of a community. You have before you what's known as the Perkins' House. It has great local significance, for those of you that haven't already read up on it. It was the home of Professor Hiram Perkins for, he was an Ohio Wesleyan professor for many decades in the late 19th century and early 20th century. He built the house in the late 19th century, and he was responsible for the building of the Student Observatory, which is immediately to the east of this property. And he also was significant in the building and development of the Perkins' Observatory down on 23 South. He's a, he's an important guy in the history of Delaware and in the history of the university. This house is essentially the last grand Victorian residence that was one of many in the 19th century. That hill where all of the dormitories are now, all the Ohio Wesleyan student facilities, including Stuyvesant, that was a residential hill for all of the bigwigs in town, everybody that had made a lot of money or had inherited. There were a lot of fine homes in that area, and this is just about the last one. And frankly, due to the serious neglect of the previous owners, I had pretty much given up on the idea that this house would ever be restored and renovated and remain part of the community. Mr. Manos, in owning this property with the current zoning, would have every right to tear that house down and build a hotel there without restoring the original grand mansion. I'm a historic preservationist through and through. I'm I'm a historic preservationist through and through. I'm, I'm glad that he has seen the value of community preservation and the heritage of the Perkins House. And he realizes what it'll bring to his project. So he has committed a significant amount of money to restore the exterior and the interior of the original Perkins House. And he's gonna build his hotel basically on the back of it in a relatively reduced visibility from the street. If you've driven by there, you know that you pretty much can't see what's in the backyard now. I, I guess I would urge you to incorporate, this man, let him incorporate it into his project. I think it will be a lot more significant to the history of the community and a lot more aesthetically pleasing with the original mansion on the front as a, as a visibility issue and an anchor. I would suggest that the details of the restoration of the exterior of the house, the original part of the house, would be under the, considered, reviewed and approved by the Historic Preservation Commission of the city. But that's totally up to you. So I, I understand neighbors' concerns. I would have the same concerns if I lived there. But as a historic preservationist that's been involved with that pretty much all my life in town, I'm glad he's come along and I'm, I'm pleased that he's incorporated the original house in his plans.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Flagler?
Good evening. Hello. My name is Lori Flagler. I live at 35 Montrose. The last time I was here, not counting a couple of weeks ago, was a few years back when we, as the Oak Hill and Montrose neighborhood, worked with this council to improve the quality of life in our neighborhood and to improve the homes that were there, the properties that were there, the upkeep that was there. That was, I don't know, five, six, maybe even seven years ago. I don't know how long ago that was. In the meantime, we have, with your cooperation and with the help of Lisa specifically, we have seen rundown rentals that were neglected with literally the height of the link fence next to me, grass that high, go into the hands, be sold into the hands of private buyers now, not rentals anymore, who are young families. And they are, on either side of me, they're working on those houses and both of them have apologized to me in the last couple of weeks for the noise they're making by ripping up and sawing and ripping off their roof and grooming trees. And I told them not to apologize. That was music to my ears to see this community that I have lived in for 33 years, raised four children in, and they've gone through the Delaware system, to see new families coming back in, to see children riding their bicycles on the streets, to see them walking up and down and chatting to the neighbors in the evening and, and the children getting to know each other and going to one another's birthday parties. We worked hard for that. And Mr. Brown, you ask a great question. If a hotel went up next to your house, two, or two doors down, what would, how would you feel about that? And that answer was dodged because Mr. Manos would not live next door to a hotel. I guarantee, I don't even know the man. I guarantee you, he would not agree to that. And tell me what would happen to the property values of your house if a hotel did go up two doors down? We have seen property values escalating in our neighborhood and we have worked quite diligently with one another to protect that. This hotel helps no one but Mr. Manos. And there are other locations, I've here that there are two other locations in the city being considered by branded hotels that are, have a name behind them to encourage and help persuade them to be profitable and successful, where he's not even done a hotel before. And you want us to take 10 steps, giant steps backwards in our neighborhood and sacrifice the quality of life that we have been building on there so that we can restore a Perkins House historically that nobody gave a crap about until this project came up? I don't think so. I'm asking you to deny this property, this rezoning and deny the building of this hotel. I have lived there 33 years. I have a neighbor who's lived there 40 years. I have a neighbor across the street who's lived there 20 some years. We could add up the amount of years that we have been in that neighborhood. You'd probably come between 200 and 300, between 100 years, all the people who live in that neighborhood. And Mr. Manos hasn't been there for one minute. I'm asking you to please give the serious consideration and not sell out the quality of life we have really worked hard for in this community so that this can go into, into, into our neighborhood and be on our block, in our backyard with strangers coming and going. It was said that 20 people lived there before and a maximum of only 29 would be there now, nine more people. Well, 20 people were under the authority of Ohio Wesleyan. Those 20 people were, maybe the one house wasn't. But most of them were. These people coming to a hotel aren't gonna be under anybody's authority. No one's watching to seeing the quality of people going, coming in and out of there. And I keep hearing mention Stuyvesant Hall, using that access, using roads in and out of it. I would like to know what Ohio Wesleyan says about this. A lot seems to be dependent on just taking their cooperation for granted. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tom Tobin. I live at 253 West Williams Street. I am two doors down from the property. I, I have several issues about the development, although I'm not sure that I can give them as passionately as what we're just giving. I couldn't agree more with everything she said. I do have a problem with the use of the word historic preservation to say that because we are just going to save the outside shell to look historic, does not mean that this house is being historically preserved. Our David over here with the Planning Commission talked about how the existing tradition, addition does not look very historic to it. Well, I didn't think the hotel addition looked very historic either. I mean, if we're going to cast stones as to what this looks like coming behind it. It is a three-story structure that looks down into all of our yards. We lose privacy. Going down the road, you may not lose privacy from the front. But we have children in the neighborhood who play, they run back and forth through these yards. This is just not the right location for a hotel. The fact that he's saying that, hey, Ohio Wesleyan is one of the most expensive schools here, universities in the area. So let's prey on the parents of these students to try to bilk them for as much more money as we can. Okay, that's the message that he's actually sending here. Oh, they'll pay it, they'll stay here. Of course they will. They've got deep pockets, they must. They send their kids here. I don't think that's an assumption that should be made. I don't know what feasibility studies were made for the access of this, but I don't know how many were made, if any were made. There should have been more that were done to go in and out of this. The idea that this is beneficial to our community and neighborhood, whereas a hotel may be beneficial for Delaware in the end, this location is not good for the community. It is actually eating away at the fabric of our residential neighborhood. As was just mentioned, all of us have been improving our properties. I myself am in the process of repainting my home, rebuilding my front porch. The property exactly to the west, who he says he's going to purchase if this happens, they did a lot of improvements to their home. And of course, as they're improving their home, they don't want to live next to a hotel either. They expressed this with the planning. And it is our understanding that Planning then contacted Mr. Manos to tell them that they're not happy. And that's how the offer to buy the home came about. Like, well, I can see where they don't want to live next to this. Let me just buy it. First off, that's not, that's not a good message to send. He's gonna turn it into rental. I did go to the meeting that he put out to the neighbors and there were a few of us. There, there was more than just three neighbors. But I asked him directly, in person, so what, what are you gonna do if this doesn't work out? I'm gonna turn it into student housing. That's what, that's what I will do. I can't help but think that that is actually the end goal here. Is that I don't see how a hotel with the rates that he wants to charge in this location is, is going to be successful. I think that in the end, he's then gonna turn it into student housing and instead of having 43 people, he's going to put two people in, you know, as a dorm and now you've got 86. Okay? Because he can do what he wants with this property, right? It gets rezoned to that and he decides that, well, you know, this isn't exactly what, what's making the most profit for my investors or myself. What can we do to change it? Well, we're right next to a university. I also wanted to address the comment he made about, hey, Stuyvesant Hall, the university and the home have been there for a very long time and it's been zoned this way. So we knew exactly what we were getting into. We've been here almost 25 years. And I have to say that, yeah, we knew we were next to a university. You know what happens in the summer during the dorms of a university? They're empty. He talks about it being a frat house. It's not a frat house. I'm sure many of you know what a frat house is. This was the, what, Peace and Justice Houses. This were a group of students and they were actually very good students. They, they had, they had some fires out at night, you know, to, to sit around, just like all the rest of the neighbors do. You had that, the beginning of fall and at the end of the semester, it's spring. Otherwise, that house is empty. It was an ideal situation. Neighbor's children, my child, my child, we used to go over to the parking lot there at, at Stuyvesant. It's where she learned to ride her bike. It's because there's, there's nobody there. That's not gonna happen when you have transient people coming in and out. The point was made very well that these people are, are, they have no rules they have to follow. They're gonna come in and out all hours of the night. I don't care how low the lighting is. It's still going to emit a glow. It's 24/7. He says that, oh, of course, this is going to bring more money into our local community, to our restaurants and not. Possibly. I, I can't really say that, but I don't know how many people are gonna, gonna walk down that way. And if they are, now we've got them walking around our neighborhoods with our kids. They're gonna bring food back because he's not providing food. So it's going to fill up these trash cans that they say they don't want a dumpster, they want trash cans. We already have, you know, a good amount of raccoons and other things in our area. This is just going to increase that type of a problem. He, he mentions the fact that this is going to be locally owned and operated and that's one of the reasons why we should be for him doing this. I just didn't realize that Muirfield was local. Okay, it may be in Delaware County, but you wouldn't consider somebody living in Sunbury locally owned and operated as well. Unless there's another part of the picture that we're not necessarily aware of. I'm also very concerned about the fact that he is looking at buying the property next door and turning it into rental. Now, he says this will be a perfect buffer, but what that also means is I'm, I'm a little concerned about encroachment. Well, you know, so if he needs to maybe have a little access or staging or maybe we'll put, he said, maybe I'm gonna have the employees live there or something. Well, maybe he's gonna have more parking in the back. Well, who does he have to check with? The property owner? Who's the property owner? Well, it isn't that convenient. He's the property owner. So the fact that he is owning that does nothing to make me feel any better. As a matter of fact, it, it just reminds me, and he says how many rentals that he has around here. I don't know how many of you remember, I very well remember staying in DeSantis Properties in Ohio State. We don't want any of that. We don't want that happening. We want to have pride in our community. I mean, if I'm gonna have rental next to my house, what's to, what's to say that, well, why don't I, I don't want to live next to that? Maybe I'll turn mine in around. Maybe the, the neighbor on the other side of me, they don't want to live next to the rental either. So they'll turn theirs in front. Now what do we have? The gateway from the west, all becoming rental properties that won't have, you know, who knows how well they'll be taken care of? I'm already thinking about, well, I'm, I'm painting, maybe I'm gonna wait and see what happens here before I invest too much more into my home. And I don't want to do that. I've been here 25 years. This just isn't the right location. It, it just doesn't work. It just came before the zoning committee and there were a number of questions at the zoning committee. And I was, I was really surprised that they all voted unanimous to just kick it on down the road and put it in your guys' court. Because, you know, they're like, hey, they're, they don't seem to be quite as interested in the neighbors, the community and, and the people around as much where they were about, well, how does, how do you get in and out of it? That's all, that's all they were really caring about. When we brought up the fact that this could increase our, or decrease our property values, the person on the zoning committee said, and I quote, "We're not really here to talk about your, your property values." I mean, it was a complete dismissal of the community. And that doesn't feel very good as a member of this community. I'd also like to point out in, in one of the planting screens that he had up here, initially he was saying, hey, all the noise and everything is gonna be to the east. The entrance is gonna be to the east. All that's gonna happen. Well, as reality sets in, as it often does, all the parking is to the west. So let's make a better entrance to the west. You know what? Let's not just make a better entrance to the west. Let's create a courtyard for sitting, for talking, for people to, to go out and, and, and enjoy the night air and, and smoke cigarettes or have conversations or whatever. And all that noise is going to go into the neighborhood, to the west. Okay? He's, he's done nothing about that. He also said, I've made this fantastic canopy to the east. It's gonna be great for catering affairs. It's just gonna be wonderful for that. If, if I remember correctly, that was the word, that he's very excited about that. You're gonna have trucks coming in and out to, to do the catering. He's gonna have noise going in. I don't know about music. I don't know about alcohol. These are all things that we need to be aware of and take into account. He really does seem less interested in our community and our neighborhood as he is with trying to, to put up a structure that by all rights can be somewhere else, should be somewhere else in, in our town. I really hope that you reject the rezoning of this parking lot, this rezoning for this parking lot, because it doesn't do anything to help the neighborhood at all in any way, shape or form. It only helps one development group and that's his. It doesn't help us. We actually liked the view from our backyard, seeing the cupola on Stuyvesant Hall and seeing that building. It's, you, the university went to great lengths to, to sort of fix all that exterior up and it's, it's a beautiful structure. And the fact that there really is no noise coming from, from there, especially when we're out during the summer, is wonderful. That won't be the case here.
I need you to wrap up, sir.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I understand. The, the only other thing that I, I would like to, to say is, is just to go along with the idea that, that there will be increased traffic. And he does know that nobody wants to live next to a hotel. We don't want to live next to a hotel. I love that house. I mean, I, I do work in architecture and I love that house and I would hate to see that house torn down. I would love to see it truly restored. If he really wants to do something favorable for the community, he, he will donate that house to the community and you can get federal funds to have it truly restored as to how it should be. But as much as I love that house, I But as much as I love that house, I don't want a hotel, especially a three-story hotel, looking down into my backyard. And he has the right to do with it because he bought it. But I implore you not to rezone the property next door, to turn it into an eyesore of a parking lot, to create the noise and help unravel the fabric of our neighborhood. Only last thing I'm going to say is that the other house is right there on William Street, more towards Montrose and whatnot, but coming towards downtown. There was a house that had been in disrepair forever at the corner of Montrose and William Street. Somebody decided to invest in that home. And it is just an absolutely beautiful-looking home now. There's another home, a brick home, just a few doors down. About five years ago, another person decided to invest and make that a beautiful home. And all that has just increased in the pride of our community. The people right to the west of us, they've completely repainted their house. And it's become a beautiful home. We're fixing ours up. That could be a beautiful home, not an eyesore of a hotel. Thank you.
Thank you. Kat Wymer?
Hi. My name is Kat Wymer. I live at 250 West William Street, which is slightly northwest to the house in question. Several issues that I have, there's the turning lane that is proposed to get into the hotel. There's also the turning lane that's already there for Elizabeth Street. There's not that great of a distance in between Elizabeth Street and where the entrance would be for this hotel. So if anyone's actually driven on William Street, it is extremely trafficky, especially at rush hour, trying to turn. And either one of these can just cause a complete traffic jam. There will be dueling turn lanes, for lack of a better term, of trying. And it's only a lane per side. So once the turn lane fills up, then it's going to be stopped on the actual road, and no one will be able to pass. As far as the bump-in goes, my yard is the only one with actual yard. I sit back off the lot. The rest of the homes on the north side of the street are very close to the street. They have like maybe 10 feet of a yard and sidewalk and the curb grass. If the curb grass is eliminated, they're extremely close to the road. The parking is not guaranteed for them. They're not going to have their names on it. And then in terms of being able to get out of our driveways, it's already a battle trying to get out of our driveways. At the point where I sit, where the curb grass is for these bump-in cars, I can barely see the tops of the cars that are coming to crest the hill towards Elizabeth. Once that curb grass is gone, there are cars there, and I will not be able to see at all. Like, there's just literally no way I'll be able to get out of my driveway safely, let alone trying to head into downtown. It's one, it's two lanes of traffic I have to try and cross. And then it was mentioned, if it was on the south side, you know, you would have to level portion, part of that hill in order to keep sidewalk or any curb grass. And that would just, you know, up the construction. And speaking of construction, like, while I understand it's temporary, what's the duration? What would they have to do for the bump-in as well as the entrances? There's going to be roadwork there. So the bump-in as well as the entrances are going to have roadwork. Is someone going to personally escort us out of our driveways so we can see and not cause an accident? I mean, how long does it honestly take for roadwork? We see it all the time, and it never seems to go anywhere. So this is completely from scratch. For the neighbors, that the home, it's possible that will be purchased and remain, will it stay residential, hopefully. But as was previously mentioned, you know, it could be rezoned in the future. It's not in the plan right now. But we don't know what the future holds. If the hotel's successful, oh, I need some catering. Or, you know, someone else realizes that there is no food for this hotel, let's try and find a home that needs, you know, we can rezone, maybe we could put a market, you know? By Liberty Street, that's where the businesses end. There's the UDF, and there's the homes that are the dentist and the veterinary. It stops there. By putting this hotel in here, it just sets a precedent that we can encroach into neighborhoods. Doesn't matter. I mean, it's one thing with a bed and breakfast that's small. It has a different type of clientele. This is not a bed and breakfast. It's, by all intensive purposes, fairly huge for a neighborhood. And it's just going to be in eyesores everybody else has set. The trash, that's, I mean, trash cans aren't going to be able to cut it. It's going to smell. You have to get the dump trucks up there somehow. How are they going to get out easily with the way the turn lanes are? And then as a business owner myself, I'm curious of the financial projections. I feel like, I believe it was mentioned that just for renovations for the home, we're estimating roughly $1 million? That's just for the home and not the tearing down of the addition, rebuilding the addition, the parking lot, the two properties he's purchased, the road fixing? And I think at the rezoning meeting before, there was something about a fee with trees, depending on how much was put back, that sort of thing. So with all of those finances building up, and you're getting a hotel room with no breakfast, how much can you charge and expect someone to be okay with that? Are those, and especially at what, 65% occupancy? That's only 29 rooms. If you have 29 rooms booked every night for the whole year, is that really going to outweigh the cost of what you're putting into it? I mean, how long's it going to take to actually get into the black? And that just begs the question of what is the end game? Why are you buying up residential places just to get what you want to make this hotel happen? I mean, honestly, it's, with someone who clearly has the resources to do all of this, is it really worth ruining someone else's neighborhood to get this project done? I mean, really, we live there. He does not live there. This is a money opportunity. And like I said, I'm a business owner. I understand that. However, I would never be able to live with myself if I knew that I was ruining someone else's life in terms of where they're living. And the fact that it does set a precedent that you can move into residential areas. If you have enough resources, maybe you could pay some people off, get what you want. And, you know, it doesn't matter what the neighbors say. So I would implore you, please, please think about this. And just think about what the community would actually want. I think it's very evident at this point what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick? Kathy Tobin?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kathy Tobin. I live at 253 West William Street. I am next door to the possible investment property, which is one house from the parking lot and the hotel. I still call it a hotel. I have a hard time calling this a name. I've lived in Delaware, as my husband has stated earlier, around 25 years in the same house. Delaware for me has always been hamburger and buns restaurant and Ohio Wesleyan. You know, we're known for things like that and other great things as well. But we're not known for a hotel, not in a residential area. I've heard there's rumors that there has, there's other planned, or other planned, and I think someone else has already mentioned, they've heard the same thing, of other hotels coming into our area that is looking, which may be, I think, a better place, not in a residential neighborhood. My concern is, what does a hotel really bring to our community and our neighborhood? Other than for the parents of the university and for this main reason for this project, keep in mind hotels are open 24 hours a day, 24 hours. This will bring lack of privacy, noise at all, time is the evening when our children need to sleep for school for the next day. Again, loss of privacy and lack of privacy. Really not in my backyard, having friends over, birthday parties, anniversaries, graduations, just gathering in my backyard, sitting in my backyard. And I feel like I'm being watched because we'll have a three-story hotel that will overlook my backyard. With the heights like that, they'll be also looking into my windows because there's going to be nothing that's going to block that height. Our homes are, you know, fairly Victorian, and we like to kind of keep our history too. But as high as this will go, it will look into my house. I will look out and see this hotel windows, or this hotel. Keep in mind also, and I know we talked about it earlier, it does bring transit clients. I would look on Wiki Travel today, and it said some of the common lodging complaints and problems, you know, with people when they stay in hotels or look at hotels, they complain mostly about the area where it's noisy, high volumes of traffic, railroads, factories and airports are some of the conditions that people don't like to stay in, you know, around hotels. We have a lot of those in that area. We have a train at one end, just two blocks down. We have large, heavy traffic which goes into our town. Hotel also can escalate crime. Areas with drug sales, prostitution, human trafficking, which Ohio ranks about the fourth in the country for human trafficking. Theft, and even worse, violence. Parking lots are going to be unsupervised. We don't know what's going to happen in those parking lots at night, in 24 hours. Will there be enough lighting to support this? That when I go out in my yard, that I can feel safe. William Street is one of the main pass-throughs for people. And as my husband said earlier, it is changing the fabric of our neighborhood. Is this what we really want to see? A parking lot is not a attractive site to look at. Can it be a hangout for kids, other activities, cars pulling in and out into the traffic, which is already heavy on a busy road? Large trucks and semis travel down our road. Our children ride their bikes. School buses come and park and pick up kids on that street. Have we ever considered what this is going to be doing to that for our children? The sidewalk's going to be reduced. On the other side, they will be cutting into a sidewalk to make more parking or make the turning lane. So we're going to reduce a side, a main chunk of that sidewalk on the north end or north side, from what I can tell. And possibly, I don't know what will happen on the other side. The developer now will own a large plot of land. If he purchases, which he's already purchased, the Perkins House, the house beside it, and then the other one for investment, if you look at that, that's a large control of a community or a neighborhood. As I think a lot of us are concerned and are just, what is the future or what is the plan for this? What is the future goal, the end game? Just trying to read over some of my notes. I don't want to repeat a lot for you guys because I think, I agree with everything that's been said tonight. Would you like to live next door to this again? I have to ask again, Jim. How would you like it? I don't think most people would. I was thinking the tree committee. I know they're putting money in that committee. Maybe they can take some of that money and plant some trees in our yard so that we can block this, you know, obstruction in our backyard. Is there going to be incentives for us when our property values depreciate? Commercial property does not usually increase the value of residential property. Is there going to be anything that's going to protect us? Because it does seem like the homes that are being purchased are getting some sort of bump up or incentive to sell their homes. I think if you look, we looked online with the Mr. Posey, 10% on top of whatever the appraised value is. Is there anything that's going to protect us when our property value does decline? Because, you know, we work. We work like you guys. And that's what we do. We put our money back into our children and our house. I mean, that's basically what life is when we're an adult. And it's an investment. And if that investment is a bad investment, what do we do? We have to kind of look and see. Is my house where I want to live? Maybe not. Do I want to turn it into rental property? Maybe so. I don't think that we really want to see the road that goes into our city as rental property. Rental property is not, people don't put ownership into that home. Renters take very little care most of the time of that property. My other concern, and I'll kind of wrap this up a little bit, is because of the future projects that we already have with Willowbrook Apartments, just right down the road by the YMCA. I think that's 180 apartments, units, which is going to increase traffic. The Coghlin Crossing, which is over on 23, which is going to be a very large mixed-use development, my understanding, retail, office space, restaurants, and other things. But where are they going to come? They're going to come into town. They're going to come to Kroger's, which, one way to go into Kroger's is right there on William Street. The increase of that traffic in our area is probably going to multiply, which, can we afford that at this point? While the jobs of putting together standards for our neighborhoods, commercial district is largely in the hands of city council. May I ask you, would you like, again, to live next door to a parking lot? Or a hotel, I mean, and a hotel? I reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's everyone who signed up. Is there anybody else here that would like to come forward at this time? As long as you don't repeat while we pour it over and over. So come on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was pretty much hearing the same thing a couple times over, but like, I'd like to bring up what Tom said.
Can you give us your name and address?
Roger, 262 West William Street.
Did you get his name? I did not.
Hashman, H-A-S-H-M-A-N.
Thank you.
I'd like to bring up what Tom said. It zones single-family residents. Okay? And that's, a lot of the houses have been renovated and beautified. They take pride in what they are. If they have zoning, and they can resort anytime they want, why have zoning? They can just, they can build this hotel and add to it, you know, build it now, small, and then go bigger and bigger until they got the whole block. How can they do that? So what's the purpose of everything? And on this street, they got a turn lane. And they have a turn later. So are they going to have a traffic light at 50 foot apart from Elizabeth Street to the in and to the out of the location? They got a 1,200-foot turn lane from King Avenue to Elizabeth Street. And that's longer, twice, three times longer than any other one downtown. They got 200-foot, 250-foot turn lanes downtown, but they got 1,200-foot out here on William Street. And if they put that hotel there, it's going to detract from everybody's home. It's going to be nothing, nothing but an empty shell. Tell me one thing. Name me a hotel in Delaware that's three stories high, that's in town. Is there one? There used to be. It was called Holiday Inn. Turned into a musty, moldy place that was unhealthy to live. And another thing, if he thinks he's going to make money by renting all this hotel to people in the community, I got news for him. I work for Capital University, and that's a private college. And so is Ohio Wesleyan. Ohio Wesleyan is a private university, and they can do what they want to do. And when they get to a location, and he thinks he's going to put people in that hotel, Ohio Wesleyan, they done it before. They mandated every student stay on campus. They got 200-foot, 250-foot turn lanes downtown, but they got 1,200-foot out here on William Street. And if they put that hotel there, it's going to detract from everybody's home. It's going to be nothing, nothing but an empty shell. Tell me one thing. Name me a hotel in Delaware that's three stories high, that's in town. Is there one? There used to be. It was called Holiday Inn. It turned into a musty, moldy place that was unhealthy to live. And another thing, if he thinks he's going to make money by renting all this hotel to people in the community, I got news for him. I work for Capital University, and that's a private college, and so is Ohio Wesleyan. Ohio Wesleyan is a private university and they can do what they want to do. And when they get to a location and he thinks he's going to put people in that hotel, Ohio Wesleyan, they done it before. They mandated every student stay on campus. They used to have sororities and fraternities. They messed them up so bad. Four years, they mandated the students stay on campus. So if you want an empty, musty hotel, go ahead and pass it. Because that's what you're going to get. Because Ohio Wesleyan can say, no, we're not going to give you our student money. No, no way. That's not going to happen. And if you can name me a three-story hotel within Delaware that still exists, I'd like to hear it. That's about all I had, really. But, you know, this zoning, it's not the place for this thing to be. I mean, they can put it in a business area, but not in a single-family residence. It don't belong there. And that's about all I had, though. Without repeating some of the other stuff, though. But that's what you want. And Wesleyan can, you know, they control, it's not a state college where they have to do what people say. They're a private college. They can do what they want to do. I worked for Capital University for 13 years and I know what they can do. They can devastate anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't want to take very long. I just have two points. My name is Sharon Hutchinson. I live at 256 West William Street. Roger and Sarah are my neighbors. They've been there for 40 years. And I didn't sign up to speak because I wasn't going to speak until he said something which I thought was pretty amazing. He said, "We bought so we know." We should have known. We should have known what? I bought a house in a residential area in front of a park across from the university. So I would think I would be completely safe. So that's my first point. There is no reason why anybody should have thought there would be businesses encroaching on our neighborhood. That's ridiculous, especially since a lot of these people have lived here a long time. But the second point kind of ties into that, which is if someone would have told me anybody would seriously consider cutting into the north side of that street, I would have told them, "You're crazy. There's no way." Because no one who cares at all about the health and safety of the residents living on that north side would consider cutting in even a foot. I'm surprised they built the road that close to our houses to begin with. I'm really surprised because our houses are dirty from the dirt that comes on there. Our windows rattle. You can't see on, you can't talk on the phone on your porch. You can't hear. We try to talk to each other, we can't even hear each other. Now, you might say, well, some of us did buy a house when that road was there, but who would look at that? Where you could just throw a paper airplane and land in the street? Who would honestly think the city would seriously consider cutting into that tiny bit of property we have between a rumbling freeway with semi? I mean, I feel like I'm being asked if I want semis to come through my kitchen or my living room. It's too close. There's no reason to cut through the north. And as many people have already said, and I hate to repeat this, but we really, literally have to wait sometimes. We can't get out of our driveway. So the last thing we need is more traffic. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? We'll close the public hearing. Do we need a break? Okay, I think we'll take a break.
We'll be five minutes.
Yeah, we'll be back at...
Break for what?
Break.
What do we, I mean, are we done with this?
We're going to answer some of their concerns. The applicant is, the city is.
Yeah, we'll break that.
Okay. And we will come back at 9:25? That's eight minutes. Too bad, it's eight minutes. The time is 9:25. We'll call this meeting back to order. So if you'll please take a seat. Okay. So we're going to try to address some of your concerns. So we're going to start with the applicants. And I think you guys wrote down a bunch of notes, so did I. So whatever you'd like to start with.
All right. Just wanted to hit on, this was, just a reminder...
Do you need their name and address for your record? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So this is a currently zoned, the person with the house on its currently zoned, I think it was planned, public use or something like that, is planned institutional use. And POI, I remember the acronym, but I don't remember what it stands for. But planned office and institutional, is that right, Dave? All right, there you go. So it is zoned outside of the single-family. I just wanted to clarify that. And it was used for student housing in the past. It's not been a single-family house and it's not built that way today. When it was, it was maintained as the Perkins home and he obviously had one of the larger houses there. It's been since added on to and modified since that occurred that way. We went through the design process, talking about parking pretty substantially and trying to look at the configuration of that, how to get access around it without purchasing and modifications to this lot to the west. And this was the preferred alternative as we went through that. The existing cut, if you know where that comes out there now, is a depression and it's not safe for someone to travel down there, not just because it's grass slash stone, but I believe that that drive was probably reverted because of the site distance issues on the eastern side. So, and for people to be turning in, it is very close to Elizabeth. So the main access point on the west side was really a focal point through the design process. This is a conditional use permit that's being sought and part of that is imposing conditions that can help with that transition zone. So I know part of the discussion about 24-hour activity, if there's conditions such, I know Jim mentioned, security cameras and other things to help on this site deter any type of activities. Can also monitor and allow for rules for those that are visiting the site. Typically, hotels do have rules and that's something that obviously could be put in place here, however that goes. But the idea of the parking lot not being secure, I hope we will address through the final development plan process and trust that that would meet or exceed any of the city's standards. And even with the limitation on lighting to keep the dark sky compliant. As far as current stays, this property was sold by Ohio Wesleyan University to the applicant. And part of the interest is to take those current stays that are outside of the downtown city portion and try to put those in the downtown portion of the city. So it is within walking distance of Sandusky, but it's not on Sandusky Street, Sandusky Street proper. The site was selected primarily because of its proximity to the university and ultimately the historic aspects of the house that lend itself well to this. As far as the, I know a lot of the comments go back to development plan commitments. This house will be bound to the commitments that were submitted with the development plan. So as far as converting to student housing or other items, those would require future voting of council to look at those. It's being built as a hotel. The interest is to maintain it that way. And we believe, obviously, we wouldn't be spending the money on this facility if it wasn't a good fit for the city itself. Roadwork delays in the construction, I'm sure we can work some of those out. There is existing parking on the road today. So the idea of the bump in parking being a site visibility concern, we can look at those individually, but hopefully the goal would be to retain bump outs where the trees are and other areas to help keep that and retain it. It is not our interest to add the bump in parking on the north side of the street. We just understand that there's a recommendation for road improvements in this area. And because of that, the discussion was that we could approach adjoining owners about the opportunity to either bump in parking or remove the on-street parking. So if there is concern, we want to work with each of the individual owners to understand that. And if they want to express concern about their neighbor's property and what might impact them too, we're open to listening to that as part of the engineering review. The idea of bump in on the south side has been discussed as well. And if that helps to offset the concerns, we're definitely open to looking at that. Ideally, these, those sites are for the residents, not for the hotel patrons. As far as the individuals bringing food back or things, there's no proposal to offer catered events at this site. It's not an event venue. This will be a hotel. And anything that's held there would be for the patrons that are of the hotel, not for outside events or anybody coming in. Yeah, it is a very tight site. The last one I had, I'm sure we can answer any other questions, but the other one I noted, I just, the rental is an actual off-site from the zoning. We're open to talking about the items there, but the rental concern was the property to the west and is not a part of the application we have in front of you tonight. So that's all I had.
As far as my, I just had a few things I wrote down. I remodeled the Chamber of Commerce and got a Main Street Award. I remodeled the nine North Sandusky beside Thurman's and got a Main Street Award. I remodeled the Visitors Bureau. I bought the West End Grill. I was the only one at the bankruptcy auction that bought it. It was caught on fire by 12 West. The city made me tear it down. I tore it down and sold it to the neighbors where my buddy Pat, we gave them the plans to construct what is there today. They use our plans. I also own the parking lot behind it. I bought the contaminated Countrywide Co-op up by the food market, which is now brown jug storage, which I spent thousands of dollars fixing that site. As far as my properties, the public is more than welcome to go look at any of my properties. My properties are very nice. I will keep them very nice for what, I mean, I have them in Arlington and Bethel Road and they're welcome to look at any one of my properties, my portfolio. As far as student housing, the comment that was made there of 86 student housing, you can't live off-campus, so no one's going to use that place as student housing. As far as kids in the neighborhood, they painted graffiti on the side of my building. They broke into the house for what that's worth. The buffer question, purchasing the house that is, it's a four-story house with dormers, or excuse me, three-story house with dormers, that is definitely a buffer between the third house over. I will do plantings, those large pear trees. You know, I don't have a problem investing in some landscaping on that property to buffer them. And I am compassionate about that. And I don't want to fight with them about that, but I will do what I can to appease As far as the, you know, I mean, for what you pay for these homes, you got to have a nice family. They got to be nice to get the rents to cover the nut for them. So it's, they're not going to be run down at all. You know, one of the great oper, or when I first bought this site, my first thought was, I'm going to tear the thing down and I'm going to build up four stories like all the dorms. They're four stories. So my parking can be underneath. So it's all in stilts. Which is an option. I don't want to do that, but that was my first option when I bought it. I didn't think, I didn't know if I was going to be able to buy the house next to it. So. That's, that's all I got.
Okay, I'd like to make just one.
I think we need your name and address further.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Pat Manuel, 4405 Olentangie Boulevard in Columbus. A lot has been said by a number of people, concerns about the three-story building and views, you know, losing privacy. Jim had alluded to it a little bit, the, the house next door to the Tobin's residence is actually a three-story home. It has large dormers on it. And it's, it sits up higher than the windows in their house do. Also, you mentioned the landscaping, we're going to be adding landscaping. And I think he also, if they wanted a couple of trees, I don't think it's out of the question for us to, you know, to plant, do some planting in their yard, you know, to help out. But one of the things I think is important to understand is that between their home and the addition that we're putting on, there's two lots, who are essentially three lots down the street. So when you talk about the height and that, that longer horizontal distance, it's really, you know, the angle of attack, so to speak, or the angle of view, really isn't that great. It would, I can see there would be a different story if they were next door and they were looking right down, but it's going to be looking out more horizontal. And we're not exceeding the, the height of the existing house. In fact, we're essentially one, because of the tower, we're one story less than what the house is. But we are doing three stories to match the main part of the house. And I think that's kind of an important thing to understand because we have distance working on our play, we have landscaping working for us. And, and then also in the backyard, I know they had, they had mentioned too, that there's concern about being visible in the backyard. And I would say that to a certain extent that is, but there's, on, on one of the properties next to them, that has a three-story house, there's also a large barn or garage. Some people call it garage, some people call it barn that sits in the backyard, which will also block some of that view. So between the three-story house and the barn and the landscaping we've put in, I don't think they're going to really see much of this building, you know, once it's in place. And, and I can, you know, I feel comfortable making the commitment that we can screen it very nicely, even if we have to do some additional screening, the law would already propose. So that was all I wanted to mention on that thing.
Okay. Mr. Farino, there's a lot of questions about traffic, increased traffic, the bump ins, the late, the turn lane. Can you, I know a lot of this was your suggestions, can you talk about any of this?
Well, I'll make comments briefly from the end of the hour, but when the project came forward, being a commercial establishment, we had some concerns regarding traffic on West William Street. It's already, as the residents know, it's very difficult, a lot of traffic through there, probably nearly 15,000 vehicles a day, traffic count. Our concern primarily was westbound movements trying to make left turns into this site during peak hours could lead to some congestion that could back up through the, through the Elizabeth Street intersection and really cause some gridlock depending on the light timing. So one of the first things we thought was, well, if we can get a left turn lane requirement in there, we can reduce that or at least mitigate that. We realized fairly quickly too, that would require changes to parking, elimination of parking or adjustments to the parking on the north side. And at the time, we asked the applicant to please start to work with the neighborhood, the community, and try to find a resolution that maintains parking for the residents. The bump out was one, bump in, I should say, was one concept to bump in, it's just, we all understand what that is, it's bumping the curb in. It provides a parking resource for that resident of those properties. Similar to a driveway, although a driveway is private, a bump in would still be in the public right of way. And there's no guarantee, as is the case today, that that parking space right in front of your house would be available when you come there. But we asked the applicant to please engage the neighborhood and begin discussions regarding that, what we talked about, the places we could enhance or add driveways on existing homes on the north side to mitigate the, the traffic issue also. So that, they're in the process of that. It's not the only solutions to traffic there. Again, we have, we do have the concerns, I really have a concern about the congestion issue and a westbound vehicle having to stop, especially in that PM peak hour movement, traffic backing up westbound, traffic stopped eastbound with a light and no one's moving. We talked about right in, right out, access only into the development to eliminate that. I think that probably in the bottom of the list for the developer regarding that much restriction on their site. Other things we've looked at are peak hour parking restrictions, will allow traffic to move more freely, allow a left turn slot when needed, but allow the parking to be on the street at off-peak hours. We talked about no left turn, westbound left turn restrictions into the site during peak hours. So traffic for the most part, most hours of the day can, under, without the turn lane, can move through the William Street corridor and make that left turn because there's probably a gap in the off-peak hours in a relatively short amount of time. But during the peak hours, that left turn westbound would be prohibited. So there's a lot of options that we have on the table. We just, again, the direction initially was work with the neighborhood, work with the neighbors impacted, and see if there is a situation that, that improves or maintains their parking. And that's still the ongoing process right now on this. And I'm not aware that we have necessarily any resolution on that. And I think developers indicated it's a work in progress right now. So there's, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things on the table to address the traffic concerns. And we'll be able to advance through more of those as we get some more feedback.
So what's your opinion of the bump ins on the south side versus the north side?
Well, if the bump ins is primarily to serve the north side residents, they're going to want it on the north side because if you want us to park on the south side of William Street and then try to cross over William Street or have to walk down to Elizabeth Street, wait for the cycle to get to their homes, so it's, it'd be a matter of inconvenience. The only benefit about the south side is, although it takes some effort to actually create that on the south side, would be that you're not pushing the parking lane itself closer to existing homes. We heard tonight about issues with the amount of noise and all. So you're not going to have that parking lane pushed closer to the home, it could exist on the south side of the road. And again, that's what we look for, the applicant, to have those conversations with the residents and bring back some information for us to be able to move forward on.
Okay. Chief Fedjanski, there were some concerns about a hotel and the safety of the neighborhood and some things that might possibly go on in a hotel. Do you have any comments on this?
Well, it's a little difficult to, to comment on what may or may not happen there without seeing the business developed. But I can tell you that probably the circular answer is, I've heard some of the concerns specifically about human trafficking. And actually, when I hear that, that's gratifying because that shows that there's people in this community that are educated on that issue and, and I assume others. So that's actually really nice for me to hear because what that does for the police department, that's what I call force multiplier. So we can only do so much when we do, when we have partners that, that help us out and makes us a lot better and a lot stronger. So we actually do get those complaints occasionally. I can tell you, I have one that's, we consider it a ever-open complaint. And I've spent hour after hour after hour after hour working on it. And to date, we don't have anything, but it's something we take seriously, understanding that there are people that are educated about the issue. We would, we would obviously trust our community to, to file complaints with us. We also have ways of investigating these things and keeping an eye out for things that may pop up in the community. Right when I first became chief several years ago, I recall we had someone who set up shop and I think the very first customer was one of my drug task force guys. And she relocated quickly to the jail. So we do take that seriously as well. We keep an eye on some of the areas where we might stumble across this kind of thing. And we're very attentive to issues in the neighborhoods as you are. So we would work together to address those complaints, the other stuff. It would be like any, any other business, we would work with, with the neighbors, we would listen to the neighbors' complaints from the neighbors, we would provide extra patrol, but you know, we don't, we try not to be just reactive. So if, you know, any business that was established began to create a problem in the neighborhood, we'd probably go and contact that business and try and work with the business owners or the tenants and just try and work out a resolution so it wasn't problematic in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Any questions that jumped out of the, you councils that we missed? Do you want us to address?
Just ask them real quick, just, I'm just curious, what do you anticipate the room prices to be?
Pardon me?
Room prices?
Probably during homecoming, things like that, around 150. I think the, out at the Hampton ends, 125, out on 71. And the bed and breakfast is 165 here in town. So, yeah, I mean, that's economies of scale, so you can adapt to the, you know, the event or.
I would say that Delaware is a very unique city. And we have things tucked in our neighborhoods, we have, how many schools tucked in the middle of our neighborhoods? We have dentist office in the middle of our neighborhoods. So we are unique. I'm not saying I'm for this right now, I'm not saying against this. We have a week to think, we have two weeks to think about this and bring it back to council. But I think wherever there are buildings, the neighborhoods adapt. I live one block from the fairgrounds, one block from the elementary school and one block from my high school. I chose to live there. None of that bothers me at all. That's just my opinion. So we're going to take this to the next reading, July 9th, is that correct? Okay.
If I may?
You may.
So I take my daughter to camp the week that this will be coming back to city council. So I will be in New York and not able to vote. If council, we have rules that say because one council member is absent, you know, you don't take it to another reading. But if you were so inclined to take it to another reading, I would appreciate that because this is in my word. If you don't, I completely understand because I need to miss.
Okay.
And I won't be here until the 22nd.
Okay. So do what you need to do.
And we've heard all of you from the audience and I listen and, and trust me, I listen to every word that each one of you said. I understand it. Everybody wants things built, nobody wants it in their backyard or in their neighborhood. We hear it week after week at council. We all want improvements, Delaware needs a hotel, period. So I thank you, I think you're investing in Delaware, you've done quite a bit from what it sounds like. So.
Thank you.
Let's just make the best for our city. Okay? Thank you.
Would I be allowed to give a comment since I won't be here at the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. I guess my, my initial and major concern here is anytime that we're looking at changing zoning in a residential area, I think that the bar needs to be extremely high. Because first and foremost, we represent the citizens that are sitting before us. And we all hear the not in my backyard concerns. However, sometimes those concerns are valid when we're talking about a zone change and changing something that people bought into. I would not want to live two doors away from a hotel. As much as I know that Delaware needs one, there's major traffic issues that our city engineer has brought to us. There's parking situations that are created by this that really, there's just no room to rectify. And it requires a zone change. And in my opinion, before I would do that, I would need to know that everyone who lived around it was okay with it. And what we're hearing very clearly is that people are not. So I guess that's the counterpoint to, you know, build what you want on the piece of property that's zoned for what you want to do, but to change zoning, I'm not in favor of at all. Okay, so that's my two cents, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll give you guys, I'm sure nobody wants to stay for the rest of the meeting, so.
Is the meeting on the night, that's a public or private or?
Public, yes, city council.
It's always a public. You're asking will we let public speak?
Yeah.
We must probably, because it's been so controversial.
Probably will?
We will, probably. Not repeat over and over and over.
Sure.
Say, we'll put two minutes in the meeting.
Yeah. Please. Elaine, will you please read item 16 of the record?
Ordinance number 18 dash 45. Ordinance number 18 dash 45, an ordinance supplementing the 2018 appropriation ordinance to establish additional funding for the purchase of Rose Salt Brien application equipment.
Mr. Farino?
I have nothing further to add. Nothing further to add from the prior presentation, only that we are requesting approval tonight if possible, so we can go ahead and get the order before, and it could arrive before the winter season.
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on 1845.
I have a motion by Mrs. Keller, second Minister Schaefer. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Regal?
Yes.
Move to enact the emergency clause on 1845.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second Minister Schaefer. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller? Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Regal?
Yes.
I move for approval of 18, where I lost my place, 45.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second Minister Schaefer. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Regal?
Yes. I assault.
Okay, we begin on item 17, consideration of resolution 18 dash 40. Elaine, will you please read this under the record?
Resolution number 18 dash 40, a resolution authorizing the restriction of on-street parking on the north side of West Fountain Avenue between Forest Avenue and Newwood Avenue between hours of 7:30 a.m. and 3:45 p.m. on school days.
Thank you. This is the first reading, we have a public hearing. Moving on to item 18, which is the consideration of 18 dash 41.
Resolution number 18 dash 41, a resolution accepting negotiated changes to the collective bargaining agreement between the International Association of Firefighters, the IAFF, Local 606, and the City of Delaware.
Thank you. And let's go on to item 19.
It's just the first reading, so we can, I just want to make sure if you have any questions, Chief and I are here, but.
First reading, let's go, let's roll. Go.
Resolution number 18 dash 42, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a revised community reinvestment area agreement with American Electric Power, Ohio Power Company for investment in real property improvements on a new build on Slack Road as previously authorized by ordinance number 18 dash 40.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is very similar to something you just passed. There were some typographical changes, AEP changed their title. And there was a small typo that although the intent was always to have it be a 15-year term, the top contract said 10. Chris Ballard reviewed it and thought that was a substantive change since it was attached to the agreement that we should go ahead and pass it with the new attached agreements. So there's no question in the record of what council authorized, but there should be no changes that council wasn't already aware of, it's just cleaning up on the document. Kelsey, anything to add?
You hit it right on the head. That's all I needed to say. Took the words right out of my mouth.
Okay.
So we recommend action this evening?
Yeah, you already passed her once, I would recommend.
Move for approval of resolution 1842.
Did you just say second?
Yes, I did.
Wow. Motion by Mrs. Keller, motion by Mr. Rohr. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Regal?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Stouts, do you have a question for?
Thank you. The report through the end of May, I think, was sent in a separate email. I did get a couple of questions from Councilman.
Jim?
Councilman Browning. Trying to multitask and I'm not very good anymore. He had asked a question about the property tax collections being up close to 20%. And I did do some double checking tonight and that is accurate. I'll take a look at it, usually triennial evaluations cause a blip. I know the prior one, our assess valuations actually went down, but that is, we have seen a 20% increase in 2018.
So there's no question in the record of what council authorized, but there should be no changes that council wasn't already aware of, it's just cleaning up a document. Kelsey, anything to add?
You hit it right on the head. That's all I needed to say. Took the words right out of my mouth.
Okay.
So we recommend action this evening?
Yeah, you already passed it once, I would recommend.
Move for approval of resolution 18-42.
Second.
Did you just say second?
Yes, I did.
Wow. Motion by Mrs. Keller, second to Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Oregel?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Souths, we have a financial report.
Thank you. The report through the end of May, I think, was sent in a separate email. I did get a couple of questions from councilman.
Brownie?
Councilman Browning.
We're just helping out there.
Trying to multitask, and I'm not very good anymore. He had asked a question about the property tax collections being up close to 20%, and I did do some double checking tonight, and that is accurate. I'll take a look at it. Usually triennial evaluations cause a blip. I know the prior one, our assessed valuations actually went down, but that is, we have seen a 20% increase in 2018 collections versus the first half of 2017. The other two questions involve reimbursements, both of them indirectly or directly from the county, first being the fire EMS. The reason that's down quite a bit is that the first payment we received in 2007 actually represented back payment from 2016. So it was actually higher, represented two quarters instead of just one. So that one quarterly point, when you compare 2018 to 2017 is the difference. And likewise with prosecutor, collections, payments for prosecution, the county pays an amount quarterly, about 50, 55,000. And in 2018, we've only received one quarterly payment. At this time last year, we had two, so that represents the difference. Entertaining, any questions council may have?
All right. You're off the hook. Mr. Hellinger?
Just real quickly, I'll be at the shade tree commission meeting tomorrow night just to respond to Mr. Wolper's request that he had made of council regarding BIA meetings and staff and a member of the shade tree commission attending those meetings. Want to follow up with the commission and Mr. Wolper on that. We do have a meeting, Mr. Freeno and I and staff tomorrow afternoon with the mayor of Marion and Sims Recycling in Marion to talk about our program and the City of Marion's program. I brief you about that a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks ago, and I'll have an update later this week. And then regarding Terra Alta, I just need some direction. I think it was left this evening that they were going to come back and continue a presentation or allow for questions. I know they're anxious to get legislation before you and a petition. I want to get some direction from council as to that so that we don't end up with, just so I have clear direction. That's helpful. I think the way it was left, you wanted to.
I mean, I don't need the presentation, but I'm sure we threw some questions.
Yeah. I think we need to digest it and then possibly put it on the next agenda.
Not July 9th, then. Because what I think they would like to know is, do they want to start getting legislation, the petition filed, before they respond to your questions?
Has the petition been filed with the target?
No, no.
What is the giant rush?
Well, I think, as you see, I mean, they're going to start selling homes in the next several months. They'd like to know, I think they'd like to put a declaration on the, on the properties, which they can do. They can put a declaration on there today. I think good form is they'd like to get the city's consideration of that first. There obviously wasn't a lot of time tonight to respond, to have council ask questions, and it was a lot to take in, so.
So let me ask this, could, let's say, the next phase of Hetherton, could they ask for an NCA? Or the next phase of Adelaide, could they ask for an NCA? I mean, what are we opening?
I mean, it raises a lot of questions. We didn't have a chance to talk about that tonight. I think it's a very, it's a good project. There are a lot of worthwhile considerations. What we didn't get an opportunity to talk about with council are really the larger policy questions about when you do this, under what circumstances you would do it, will it set a precedent for other projects, how do you keep that from happening, all of those kinds of questions, which require more than 15 minutes squeezed in between an agenda that's taking us until 10 o'clock. It's really, there are a lot of issues that this raises, but, and there are a lot of, I think there's a lot of good recommendations that they have about what they want to do, but in turn, we have, I think, from a staff standpoint, from a council standpoint, an obligation to have some conversation about that. But they would like to get legislation before you. I'm, I'm a little hesitant only because I think we need some direction from you as to, are you interested in actually doing this? And if you are, the direction back to them would be, let's move ahead. But then there are a lot of questions about the mileage amount. They talked about seven and a half. They obviously presented you information tonight that it could be lower, just kind of depends on what you want to reimburse them for. And it's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of dialogue.
I'm not crazy about it.
I'm not either.
Yeah, I wouldn't support it.
Improvements that are made to a neighborhood belong to the neighborhood association. Improvements made for the public good, for me, that's a different story.
And I would have felt awful, really, if they brought this to us upfront rather than on the tail end.
Well, they've been, they've been talking, in fairness, they've been talking to the staff about this really since the inception, since the inception of the project. We had a meeting with the finance committee. It's been only, the threshold question, well, we always have to come back to city council. Are you, are you interested in doing this?
Since, wait a second.
What inception that they started?
Right, because this is, this goes back, how many, 10, 11 years?
Well, not that long. I'm saying since they purchased it. The conversation.
Which was when?
A year ago, a year and a half ago. Yeah.
But yeah, but we are just not hearing about it.
No, but we've, I think we have, we went before the finance committee a couple of months ago and talked about it and said that they, they had been interested in putting an NCA before you. You know, they're at the point now where they, they'd like to get some direction, and so.
When people pay their taxes to us, they assume it's us. And so they get angry with us. And so my, but the threshold, the threshold question for me is, is this worth people having a negative feeling about the city's tax collection to pay for parks and entrances and benches? And to me, if the people that live in that neighborhood want to pay for that, then they can pay an association fee.
They can pay their age away and just, to have it on your property tax bill that comes due, gives the perception that it is somehow government-related, and that, that no good can come to the city, can accrue to the city from people thinking that they're paying more to the government than it is. So, and if they, and seeing how it's never sunset, it goes in perpetuity. That's just ridiculous. And when you look at their collections, what was that, 24 million over 30 years or something like that? And after they pay everything off, that's a lot of paint for the clubhouse for the next 30 years. It's just.
So you're not moving there?
Maybe next. But, but really, it just doesn't, I don't see where it benefits, and they say, well, because, you know, when they talk to us in the finance committee meeting as well, because we can't sell our houses at a high enough cost because people won't pay for it because it's in the city schools. It's like, that's crap. I mean, I throw the crap flag.
Houses weren't, the price point's not even that high.
Yeah.
There's houses in Adelaide Park going for 350,000.
Yep.
One thing, and I don't opinion whether I have this attorney, I know the applicants left, and we did tell them we might discuss it again, but it might make sense to, if we're going to have discussion, discussion, to do it, we can even just put it on the agenda, not as legislation, but we can just say discussion or something.
Yeah, that's really, I was thinking.
They need to be here to do what they have to say and respond. One point I'd like to make, George, your point is, if this is disclosed properly, where people understand what it is, that people move into this neighborhood and they make such a decision to do it or not do it.
Absolutely.
So if it's disclosed properly, and you say, look, there's an NCA charge, and here's what's going to cost you, and here's the deal, and then they decide to do it, that's a financial decision on their part.
So why don't they do it in a homeowners association? Why do they have to disguise it and put it on a property tax? Make it a nature way for you.
It's disclosed.
Hey.
It's not disguised.
It is.
Sometimes it doesn't get disclosed, though. I mean, if one person sells their house to the next person.
If I buy your house and you're already there, how's that disclosed to me? Other than maybe in some whirlwind thing at the closing?
At the closing.
You know, it's like, okay, well, that's one of the 400 things that I sign. So it's, you know, and again, if you want, just make it a homeowners then. What's the big deal? Why, why can't they just do it as nature?
They want automatic payment rather than a bill.
Exactly.
And people, you know, it is an extra tax, and people, Chester complained about that already, so. And that was for a road, so.
Yeah, for something more tangible, maybe. All right, but yeah. So they, I think they left understanding they'd come back at the July 9th meeting if there would be some questions about, about this.
I'm more happy.
Yeah, yeah. Steve is here as well.
I still think it has some merit, but I think, like Tom said, there's some serious public policy questions in terms of what kind of limits do we want to put on this, what kind of disclosure rules do we want to have, you know, when's appropriate, when's not. I don't want to totally shut the door on it, but I think we've got some work to do before we.
We're almost going to have to put an ordinance out there, something that says unless you have 800 houses, don't bring us an NCA, or 1,000, whatever the number might be, because I don't want every single developer now coming to us before they start the next one to say, we want to put an NCA.
Yep.
I agree.